Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Tuesday, January the 4th, 2022 work session. We will say good evening as well and welcome to the people that are in our viewing audience, viewing live stream. I would ask that we are going to call the meeting to order. We are starting with 1.01 and we will move to 2.02 and I would ask that I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, we will move to 3.01 and setting the agenda and I will ask for a motion that the agenda be approved as presented.
So, Madam Chair. I was wondering if we could make an amendment to the agenda after we get the information tonight, if we would possibly have to make a, and I don't know if I need to do amendment, if we would maybe possibly need to do a vote tonight. And I don't know if this, I maybe need to ask the attorney if this would need to be amended?
I don't think so. So, what we'll do is let's receive the information. If you decide at that point in time you want to push it on the, put a motion on the floor to amend the agenda, then we can do it at that time.
Is that what we would need to do?
Yeah.
Or should we do it at this point?
Well, are you sure you want to amend the agenda at this point? That's the question.
For a possible vote?
At this point in time, this board has not adopted this agenda. So, if you know that you want to vote on something, you can add it to the agenda. But after it has been adopted, then you would have to make a motion to amend the agenda to add whatever topic that you wanted to vote on. So, if at this point in time, you're sat, that you are satisfied regardless of what is said tonight, you want to have a vote on something, then you can ask that that to be added to the agenda.
So, you saying we could just wait then to get the information?
You can wait to get the information and at that point in time, if you say, "I would like to move to amend the agenda to add topic X for a, for a vote," then it would be seconded and then it would be voted on as to whether to amend the agenda at that time.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Thank you.
So, I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell. Did I have a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Adcock. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion passes unanimously and the agenda is currently adopted as presented. We are going to move to 4.01 and begin with Board Chair comments and Superintendent comments. For Board members and for the viewing audience, we had a couple of emails regarding questions about timing of the Board of Education's meetings. Just so that you know, it's listed on the website under the Board of Education. Our calendar is there. This calendar of meetings is normally adopted in the very beginning of the year. So, it's always there. You're able to see that our first Monday is the work session, the second Monday is the business meeting. The only thing that differs would be the exception like tonight when there's a holiday that's included and that usually is taken care of in the very beginning. So, I think there were some questions about this being a special called meeting. It is not. It is definitely our regularly scheduled work session. A special called meeting, there has to be a request from Board members and there has to be a majority of the Board to approve that and then the Board Chair can call a special called meeting. That is a different set of circumstances. So, there's a procedure that has to be followed for that. But other than that, and then an emergency meeting has its own criteria as well. But normally, we are always under our regularly scheduled work sessions on the first Monday and our business meeting session on the second Monday. And also, we will advise all of you and remind the Board members that the Board will meet January the 22nd, which is a Saturday. That is our planning session slash retreat. The staff and the administration are working real hard to put an agenda together. That is where we will receive updates, reports, that the Board, lots of discussions that we need to make decisions on throughout the year. But that is scheduled for January the 22nd, which is a Saturday and it begins at 8:00 a.m. and has a tentative end adjournment at 4:00. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Kapiki for 4.02 Superintendent comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few quick comments. First, I'd like to welcome everyone back and wish everyone a Happy New Year. I hope your holiday season was fruitful and everyone had a chance to rest. And I want to begin our, our meeting this evening by welcoming our newest member to our, our staff and the Cabarrus County Schools. That would be Carol Herndon, who has assumed our Chief Financial Officer position. Carol comes to us with a deep knowledge of the finances of our district and has many deep experiences on the cover of wide, both in private and public sectors of experience that she brings to the Cabarrus County Schools. We are very pleased to have her and have her join our team and I have no doubt that she is going to continue the excellence that exists here in the Cabarrus County School Systems and she will put her personal touch on the Finance Department. And without question, I truly believe we have found ourselves an outstanding leader in the Finance Department and Carol is going to take us to heights we have yet to see. So, Carol, I welcome you and I thank you for being part of our team and I wish you nothing but success. In that vein, I'd also like to take, take a moment to thank Kerry Cox and Kim Aldridge for their great work that they did over the last couple of months. This is actually the first time since I came in August, hard to believe four and a half months have gone by so fast, that we actually have a full cabinet. So, I'm very happy and very excited to have all these people that have joined us and those that are still here that have warmly helped me be productive in the district and help the district run. We are surrounded by great people and we've added great people and I'm very excited to work with this cabinet and the rest of the people in the Cabarrus County School System. So, to that end, Kerry and Kim were two of those people and they continue to work here and, and work in the Finance Department. But I thank them very much for the work that they did and for filling in and stepping up at a time we needed them desperately to help us in that department. So, I thank them and am very grateful for their work. I'd also like to say a special thanks to the Sheriff's Department deputies and the City of Concord Police Department. Over the last couple of months, we've been challenged with a lot of different things on social media, rumors, innuendos, what have you. And many times, we have to reach out to the Sheriff's Department and the City of Concord Police Department for extra help, extra coverage, just to be around our schools, to support our systems, our teachers and our faculty and our, our support staff and what have you. And every time we reach out to them, they without question respond, show up, lend their support, encourage us and are just outstanding folks to work with. And I'm very appreciative of the Sheriff's Department deputies and the City of Concord Police Department. I thank them for all the help that they continue to provide for the Cabarrus County School System. Also, I'd like to update the Board and the community on our virtual learning. It is something that I would ask everyone to continue to be patient with. I think our teachers doing a phenomenal job under very trying circumstances and a very difficult environment. Virtual learning is something that we're continuing to update and take a look at and get better at. Many of our kids are quarantined. We're trying to find better ways to provide them a virtual learning experience. So, right now, I can report to you that we have updated our Canvas websites, we have updated our teacher websites, and as recently as yesterday, we have allowed our principals to hire the tutors who are assigned to their buildings for 10 hours a week and to give them the flexibility to let them work when they see fit so that our students have the ability to interact with a live teacher sometime during the day. So, over the next week or two, our principals will be organizing that and setting that up to what's best for their buildings and it'll give our students, especially those that are quarantined, an opportunity to interact with teachers that during the day within that 10-hour period over the week so they can have a live interaction with the teacher. I'd also like to report to you that I do know that myself, Dr. Withers and others have been around in the buildings and I know that today, we were able to observe teachers in several elementary schools, working with our quarantined students through live teams interactions. So, again, I commend our teaching staff and our faculty for going the extra step and always continuing to reach out to our kids and to do a great job. Our teachers are the bedrock of this community. I know the Board has expressed that many times as to how much they value and appreciate the teachers and respect them. And I just want to commend our teaching, teachers and our staff and our faculty, our support staff for all the work that they do. Then finally, it takes the team, right? So, it's the transportation folks that are out there on the buses. I know today, we were out there three-thirds this morning. Art Whitaker was out there with his team, making sure the roads were clear so that we could have a safe arrival this morning because there were some uncertain weather conditions. I just received an update this morning. I believe it's going to snow in the mountains from what I hear. And Art and his team and the transportation folks here in the Cabarrus County School System do a fantastic job. As we saw last, last meeting, Stephanie came and gave us a great report on the, the great work that the cafeteria folks are doing and making sure that our kids are fed and providing the meals for them and all that they can and, and reaching out and finding other funding sources to reward our staff. So, I appreciate their efforts as well. So, to everyone that's working in the Cabarrus County School System, I thank you. I appreciate you. I know our Board appreciates you. I know our Board is always looking for ways to show that, that thanks and that praise and we just want to say that we commend you for the great work that you do. And we're all optimistic that 2022 is going to be a fresh start for all of us and a great, great year in the Cabarrus County School System. And I thank everyone that participates in making sure that we are successful. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. So, next, we will move to 5.01, which are our committee reports. And Board members, we won't go into those tonight. I know a couple of you have some reports, but would like to do those at the business meeting. Is, is everyone okay with that? Okay. The update on the task force, we will be rotating some people off and adding some people back. I'll take care of that next Monday night as well. And then the two new committees that we have discussed in the past, staff is working on those as well. So, we will, we will go through those structured system and, and name those people next Monday. So, let's just be prepared to do that for whatever your committee positions are or your liaison positions. And then next, we will move to 5.02 and we will have Mr. Jay White for the Board Attorney Reports. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair. One of the things I wanted to just touch on, the only thing I really wanted to touch on, you talked about special meetings or meetings. This Board does have a policy in regards to meetings and just for you to know, just out of, we have regular meetings and we have emergency meetings and then we have specially called meetings. And at the beginning of the school year is when you set up what your meetings are going to be, the first and the second of the month. And if you're going to have a specially called meeting outside of those, it would be a majority of the Board making a decision or a request for that meeting to be heard. There is an opportunity for emergency meetings and emergency meetings can be the Board, the Chair, the Superintendent in limited circumstances, or two Board members. But the question is, what's the emergency and is, is there a need to have that, the meeting to be done? So, just to touch on what you said earlier about what the meetings are, specialty meetings are typically, have already been set, but there's a work sessions, retreats, things like that. The specialty meetings can be called outside of whatever you've already scheduled as long as it's the majority of the Board that's asking for that meeting. And then in an emergency setting, it could be less than the majority. It could be two. But the question would be, what's the emergency? And that actually would be through the Superintendent, just to let you know. Okay?
Thank you. That was great clarification.
Jay, can you just disclose for the public if there are any timelines that have to be met when calling those meetings?
Yes. Thank you. When you're talking about calling a meeting, is you still, it's still considered open meeting laws? So, you'd have to have 48 hours' notice. So, is that you would have to give 48, obviously, you'd have to give 48 hours' notice so that that would be sent out to the press, to the public, to let everybody know that we are going to have a meeting and it's going to be on this date. So, you would have that. Typically, you would also want to say what you're talking about or discussing so the public can understand whether they need to be present or want to be present to talk about, or at least tune in to what that topic's about. So, if for instance, tonight, we close this meeting and one or two of you wanted to have an emergency meeting tomorrow, you would not have the 48 hours' notice. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That is all for our report section. We will move to, no, actually, it's not. We will move to 5.03 and we will have Dr. Kapiki with the Cabarrus County Schools COVID-19 data and information update.
So, the current metrics that you see in front of you, the first two indicators that you see that are both in red are as current as the knowledge that I have today. That could have changed. On the Cabarrus Health Alliance positivity rate for the county of Cabarrus is 15.4%. That could be updated and you could ask the, the representation from Cabarrus Health Alliance to see even if that has increased or decreased. But the last I checked at, the last that I was informed, which I believe was yesterday, was, was a meeting that I attended, it was at 15.4%, positivity rate. The update on the cases in Cabarrus County are 3,212 cases currently, which clearly puts us in the red zone. And then what you'll see below there are the positive cases, 125, and the number of quarantines that we've experienced, which is 732. Those two metrics go back to prior to leaving before the Christmas breaks. That would be the most recent updates that we have on those two metric pieces. As you know, we just entered school back today. So, that's the most recent update we have on, on the metrics. As you can see, the 15.4% is from the Cabarrus Health Alliance website. Again, that could be updated. It could be higher, it could be lower. That's the most recent that I have. If you see on the top there, it says updated January 4th, 2022, which quarter would be today. This is from the CDC. If you pop around different sites, they're usually within a couple percentages of each other. I know this is a question that is often asked at the meetings, is what does the CDC positivity rate have for our county? That has us at 19.22%. The cases that you see there from North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, 3,212, which is where we pulled that information from. This is the graph that we often show that talks about the quarantines and the positive cases that we have in the Cabarrus County School System. The red line indicates when we went mask optional, on October 25th. You can see a slight increase in our quarantines initially, then it kind of flattens out and then it's kind of slowly crept up to where we are today. And the date back on that 732 case count is December 20th of 2021, right before the Christmas break. Our positivity rates, you can see again, the blue line indicates some small increase there. We're at 125 cases currently, back to the 20th. This is the metric that deviates the difference between when we were masked, which is in the white, and then the shadow purple is when we went to a mask optional situation. So, you can see the positives in the quarantines and how it affected the elementary, middle and high schools and what those ratios are. These are the averages, the mask mandatory is compared to mask optional status at the request of the Board. You can see in the, the first column is the mask mandated situations on the confirmed positive cases, what the average was, what the high was, what the low was. Then you can see the same thing for the mask optional. And then below that, you'll see the confirmed quarantines, the average highs and lows versus mask mandated versus mask, mask optional. Last column gives the overall averages that we've experienced combining both of them together for the school year thus far. Going to stop there and I will come back after. Mr. Basilese is going to give you an update revision on the quarantines and the isolation requirements that have just come down from the recent directives in regards to the toolkit of North Carolina and some of the CDC requirements. So, Mr. Basilese is going to speak to that now.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. Thanks for having me tonight. On last Thursday, we were notified that the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services updated their toolkit. And so, I'm going to share with you all the impact of those changes, what it means for us in terms of students exclusion from school due to COVID. So, the first thing to note is that the, these revisions will significantly decrease the time out of school for students who are positive or close contacts or for those who show signs and symptoms of COVID-19. Some of the changes are that we also will be experiencing a required masking on return for short time periods. COVID-positive students are able to return five days earlier, which cuts the time out of school in half. Close contacts are able to return much sooner than previous, than they previously were and reducing their time out of school to five days. Then finally, symptomatic students have a clear set of expectations for when they can So, what remains the same? The toolkit still has an exemption for quarantining in close contacts when all parties involved are masked. So, in other words, if a school is in a universal mask setting, then the students, then students are not excluded as close contacts, other than the brief moments at lunch or other times where students masks are down. And then of course, individuals who are not fully vaccinated after a close contact in a classroom or other school setting, if masks are being worn by both persons, those folks do not have to quarantine, right? So, the positive person has to go home, but the close contact does not have to, the would-be close contact does not have to go home because they're, both parties were masked. Now, importantly, this applies to adults and to students. Okay? I'm going to ask to pause for just a minute, okay? This would go much better if I could actually see you and what I'm reading and I pretty much got my way through it the best I could, but, so thank you for that break. Thank you.
Hey, John, can you go back to the previous slide?
Sure, of course.
So, where, where are we addressing if they're vaccinated?
I assure you, we'll get to that.
Okay. Just making sure because I don't always say that because that's the number one question.
Absolutely. I'll get to that in just a moment. So, I want to remind you all that we've been doing Test to Stay. This is a project with the ABC Science Collaborative and it remains an option for students exposed to close contacts. It serves as a means of reducing time out of school for students and for staff and that, obviously, continuation in a mask optional setting will result in a greater level of testing for school nurses. So, what we know is that we had 315 students in the month of December and in the, basically the two weeks that we ran Test to Stay, we had 315 students participate in that, in that program. Now, currently, as of today, there are zero people enrolled because it starts over for the spring semester. But three, that's 315 kids that we did not have to quarantine, right? So, I just really need to bring your attention to that. All right. So, let's talk about the changes to quarantine, isolation and exclusion. So, for confirmed positive COVID-19 students and staff, there will be changes. There's changes for those exposed to COVID-positive people who are known as close contacts and then people with symptoms of COVID-19. So, there's some changes for all three of those groups. So, for the quarantine period, I want you all to be thinking in terms of five and five, all right? If we keep coming back to five and five, that will help us answer how long kids have to be out of school and how long on their return early, they'll have to wear masks. Let's talk for a minute for those who are not required to quarantine as close contacts. So, the first thing to note is that fully vaccinated students under the age of 16, so those who've had their two doses, are not required to quarantine. Then anyone over the age of 16 who is eligible for a booster and has received it, right? As of, at least when I checked yesterday, as of yesterday, only 16 and up were eligible for the booster, okay? People with lab-confirmed previous positive tests for COVID within the last 90 days. I've heard people on this, in this Board talk about the building up of natural immunity so that 90-day standard still applies. And also, please note, the exposed person must not have symptoms, right? And they also, when they return, must wear a mask for 10 days from the time of their exposure. So, let's talk about those who are required to quarantine as close contacts. So, unvaccinated students and staff who have been within six feet of a COVID-positive person for 15 minutes or more during a 24-hour period in which either or both parties were not wearing a mask. So, essentially, this means that if a person, COVID-positive person was not wearing a mask and they were near somebody who was wearing a mask, that person would be considered, that was wearing the mask, would be considered a close contact and would have to go home as a close contact. Okay? So, for close contacts, those exposed to someone with COVID-19, the requirement is that those students will stay home for, from five days, for five days from the time of exposure, the last known exposure to the COVID-positive person. That's five days. And then on the sixth day, they can return to school if they're properly wearing a mask for the next five days. So, through day 10 from the time of exposure. I want to pause for a minute because that's, that's very different than when we started, right? You all may remember when we started, it was 14 days. We found ways to knock that down to 10 days and, and seven days through testing and students being asymptomatic, allowable ways to do that. Now, it's gone even lower to five days, provided the people coming back wear masks, which they had to do on coming back early anyway. Okay? So, for, so for confirmed positive cases without symptoms, so these are, we often refer to people who are asymptomatic but COVID-positive, those folks are required to stay home for, from five, for five days from the time of their initial COVID test, right? And then they can return to school properly wearing a mask for the next five days through day 10 since the time of their last exposure. Again, you all will recall, that's been 10 days flat. That time has been cut in half. So, for confirmed COVID-positive cases with symptoms, so where the person's symptomatic, those students and staff have to stay home for five days from the time of the onset of their COVID symptoms. And they also have to be fever-free for at least 24 hours and they have to show that their COVID symptoms are improving. Okay? And then when they return again, you all know what I'm about to say, the next five days, they're going to, they are able to return to school as long as they're properly wearing a mask. So, if, if a staff member or student has symptoms, they should get tested if possible. This should be done regardless of vaccination status, all right? We're all aware of breakthrough cases. So, if you have symptoms, we're encouraging people to get tested. If testing is not possible, parents should contact school nurse and staff should contact Human Resources and treat it as if it is a positive case in terms of isolation and quarantining. Again, I want you to think in terms of five and five, all right? Those are the days out of school and then the days that you'll have to wear a mask when you return through the, through day 10, right? Now, the trick here, I think, is that the start date is a little bit different for each condition, all right? So, what's the same? Everything is five and five. What's different is when is the start date? For close contacts, it's the date of the last exposure. For, for people who are positive and without symptoms, it's the date of their start date. And then for those for whom, who have, are tested positive and also have symptoms, we go, we count five days, but we need to make sure that somebody's fever-free for 24 hours and their symptoms are improving. Now, a special consideration is given for people who are eligible for, but have not yet received their booster dose, okay? And so far, that's a very small segment of our population, right? It's a small segment of our student population, I should clarify. So, these staff and students are expected to quarantine for five days at home and then return to school wearing a mask through the 10th day. Now, however, if quarantining for this group who's been, what's been called fully vaccinated, you know, up until now, if this group, if it's not feasible for them to do so, they can return, provided they strictly adhere to mask-wearing through the 10th day of exposure. So, that's 10 days of them wearing a mask. They test negative on day five and they continue to be free of COVID symptoms. All right. So, I'm going to thank you for your time and I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Kapiki.
So, if you have any questions, I'll answer what I can. So if you have any questions, I'll answer what I can, but we do have guests and representation from the Cabarrus Health Alliance with us this evening to answer questions the board may have for them. I've asked them to be here because I do believe they are the, well, I don't believe, I know, they are the medical experts and more apt to answer some of your questions. Many of your questions were excellent and focused on a lot of the medical technology and, excuse me, medical terminology, and I felt it'd be best, and through the board's request, that we would ask the Cabarrus Health Alliance to be here. I have noticed, I believe Erin Shu and Tammy Alexander, two representatives of Cabarrus Health Alliance, are here this evening to engage and to talk with you, and I do believe they have a presentation also with you. I'd also like to thank them because they are a great resource for us. Erin and Tammy are great people to work with and talk with, and they're always available to answer your questions and to kind of walk you through a lot of the scenarios in the ever-changing environment of COVID, so they've been very helpful to us, and I appreciate their time here this evening. So if it's okay with you, I'm going to step aside again, let them present. If you have any questions for me or any questions, any recommendations, I'll be happy to answer those at the end of their presentation, okay?
So let's let them present. That'll make it a whole lot easier.
You got it.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight.
I apologize also. I did not see Dr. Coyle back there. I couldn't see from here, so I don't have glasses on, Dr. Coyle, so I apologize, I didn't see you. But I'd also like to say, too, that Dr. Coyle has been another great resource for us, that we've constantly had conversations with her, and she's always been available and helpful to us as well. So I do appreciate her being here as our Public Health Director and taking some time to speak with us this evening, and she, again, has been very helpful to us. So thank you, Dr. Coyle, for being here. And if I'm missing anyone that I don't know that is here, please feel free to introduce them.
Yes, I will introduce them.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Dr. Kibicki. Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Kibicki has already introduced myself, Tammy Alexander, who's our Director of School Nursing, and Erin Shu, who is our Deputy Director of Public Health. Also joining us tonight is our Vice Chair of our Board of Health, Dr. Laura Pons, who lives in Mount Pleasant and has been serving this community for 23 years, and currently works at Atrium Cabarrus as a very, very dedicated family physician that we are extremely, extremely lucky to have on our board. So as Dr. Kibicki mentioned, what we want to do is present a little bit of data for you tonight, and then answer some of the questions that you have already submitted to us, and then have the panel available to answer additional questions or clarify some of the questions that you may not fully understand. So at this point, I'm going to have Erin step up and go through our data slides, and then we will all be available.
So, Dr. Coyle, before Erin gets started, I just want to make an acknowledgement. No, you can come up. So you actually will be taking Barbara Shepherd's place on our task force, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome. And will you key up, Erin? Yeah, okay. And then Tammy Shep, Tammy Alexander, you're already on the task force, correct? So I thought we had three. Is there an additional one that's, or is it just the two of you? Is it just the two of you? Okay, great. All right, thank you. You may start.
Yeah. Well, Happy New Year. Thanks for having us back, and thank you for submitting your list of questions so that we could come prepared to make sure that we made the most of your time and our time and the viewing audience's time tonight. So let me make sure I have the right clicker. Mr. Basilese, prep me. Okay, here we go. All right, so I am going to ask that we hold questions until we get to the end. Hopefully, we'll answer all of your questions through the series of slides, but if not, we can absolutely circle back and answer what you still have remaining. So just wanted to start here. So every Monday morning, a bit of a review, we welcome our local leaders, including Dr. Kibicki and Ms. Grimsley, to really kind of a data update on the state of COVID in Cabarrus County. We've been doing this now for 24-plus months, and so wanted to show you just a snapshot of what the team looked at yesterday. And I've got two things circled here. I've got the week of 12/20 along with January the 3rd, just so you could see the remarkable uptick, not only in cases, but in the percent positive that Dr. Kibicki just referenced as well. So we're really going to be focusing on what's happened over this last two-to-three-week period. So this is a slide that I believe you see every week in your data update, but this breaks down the COVID cases between 0 to 18 years old in Cabarrus County. So you can see 0 to 4 in yellow, our 5 to 11-year-olds in purple, 12 to 17 in gray, and our 18-year-olds in green. All four of these age brackets have seen an increase over the last several weeks, but you can see the remarkable increase in all of them, but especially in our 12 to 17-year-olds and our 5 to 11-year-olds. You hit on vaccinations a few minutes ago, so I wanted to put this in here because I'm really proud of our students who have had the opportunity and taken the opportunity to get vaccinated. So our 5 to 11-year-olds is our most recent age group, so we have 16% of our 5 to 11-year-olds in Cabarrus County who are fully vaccinated. Caveat, this is not with the booster, so we're not tracking fully vaccinated with that booster yet, so this would be the two-do series. And then our 12 to 17-year-olds, 45%. So something to keep in mind as we're looking through this tonight. Okay, so what I did is I took your questions and I lumped them into themes. So some of you had similar questions around metrics or how we track things, hospitalizations, so I lumped them by themes versus by person. So we're going to go through these by themes, and then, like I said, we'll come back for questions. So the first question was, based on scientific data and medical opinion, would you recommend any revisions to our current metrics that were developed by the task force in October of 2021? So we would ask that metrics three and four, and I did not screenshot those and add them in here, but we would ask that three and four be revisited because the scale of those seems awfully high. It would be really, really difficult to meet that 5%. If you recall, that green was 5%. So 5% of 34,000, I rounded, 34,000 Cabarrus County students is 1,700 students impacted, and that's a lot. I think we would see a trickle-down effect that would impact more than just students being excluded, but would have staff implications as well. So we would recommend that we review those two metrics. And I would also recommend that you either choose three or five, because when you have four, and we've got two and two, we're in this awkward, how do we swing? Which way do we go? All right, so the second question was, based on our county's current transmission rates, what are your recommendations for optional versus mandated masking in our schools? I put it in red because I didn't want it to be missed. We're recommending that we go and we are in masks. That's been our recommendation for quite some time now, especially with the data where it is and the growth in cases. You just saw it, the percent positive. Everybody should be masked. We met with Dr. Kibicki and John Basilese last week. It's unanimous from your health director, your superintendent, that our students should be back in schools and masked, and our staff on campus. So again, we've had over 3,000 cases in the last 14 days, and if you look at the state's dashboard, they actually have a rolling percent positive piece of data that you can look at, and it changes frequently every single day. But when I pulled this, it was at 21.9%. The fact is, is that cases are likely under-reported right now, so just a bit of information, because home tests are hard to find. If you've tried to find a home test for you or a loved one, they're really difficult to find. A lot of times, when people test positives for home tests, they don't report those. Again, the hardship in finding the tests. And then with Omicron, and we're going to talk about this in a little bit, the milder symptoms, especially over the holiday break, people said, you know, I'm just going to shrug it off and work through it, and so we really think that this is an under-reported data point. All right, so for testing, will our county have enough rapid test and nursing staff to adequately keep up with the increased demand from the Omicron variant in our schools? So currently, today, point in time, no. Testing is very difficult. Across the street from our facility in Kannapolis, StarMed hosts testing, and Kannapolis City Police were out there directing traffic today and cutting off the line. So again, it's very difficult. Walgreens, CVS, any of our pharmacies, it's difficult. So no, so the tests are in high demand and short supply. All of the vendors, I talked to four separate vendors today, all experiencing similar challenges, but we are being told that supply should improve quickly, and we've already requested more than 3,000 rapid test kits from the state, so we're hopeful to see those arrive anytime. Are our school nurses able to use test results from home, self-test kits? So I'm so glad that John Basilese was able to present on the changes to the toolkit because the changes have an implication for this question. So the updates to the strong school toolkit really eliminate the need for testing to return from quarantine early. So if you'll remember, you could test, I hate to use the term "test" out of quarantine, but you could test to return after day seven. Well, now, because we have the five-and-five rule, you no longer need that test. But when positive home tests are reported, and our school nurses receive these each and every single day, the nurses consider these presumptive positives and still provide that guidance to these families on what they need to do in terms of the isolation and quarantine. The ABC Duke Collaborative, or the Tests to Stay, as it's commonly known, does not allow home test kits to be used as part of the research study, okay? So contact tracing, have any changes been made to the contact tracing process to make it easier to complete by staff, including online forms or digital downloads? So I'm not sure I interpreted this question correctly, but each school, each school nurse and their administrators really encourage to work together on how best to conduct contact tracing at their site. So there's no one-size-fits-all, there's no one tool that everyone's required to use, so that decision really is a school-based decision. We support whatever they choose to do, the adoption of technology or not, and certainly, if anyone has recommendations, and we have had nurses who've said, well, this is the way I'm doing it, that we've shared with others. So certainly, we will take that feedback and share it widely. All right, so variants. So can you discuss the milder symptoms of the Omicron variant as compared to others? So it feels like we've been talking about this variant for a really long time, but we just learned about this variant about six weeks ago. So we have to remind ourselves that we're really just still learning about this variant, and it's really, really early. But I did see this report out of Geneva today, just today, that as more evidence is emerging, that it does a fear that it's affecting a different part of the respiratory tract. And in just a minute, I'm going to invite our physician to explain more about that as she's seeing these folks every single day. So we'll hold on this for just a minute. All right, so hospitalizations. So how many children are currently, oh, I'm sorry for the typo there, are hospitalized in ages 5 to 18 with COVID? So currently, none, but we have had children who have been hospitalized, Cabarrus County children who have been hospitalized, but luckily, right now, we don't have any, so that is really good news. So I'm going to ask Dr. Pons to come up and take this next question about, in your medical opinion, you know, really, how do hospitalizations impact your decision on whether to ask our students and our staff to mask or not mask in our buildings, and perhaps a little more broadly, just what they're seeing in the hospital right now?
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity. So our bed capacity in our hospital here is, we're a 450-bed hospital, but during COVID, the governor has suspended your bed totals for the state, and so we're basically limited in our beds by the number of staff we have, not by the number of licensed beds we have. So I think that this question for me is tough, because I have been in the hospital for the last two years. I'm a family physician hospitalist, and so I do work with COVID patients, and have worked in ICU and have seen the worst of the worst. So I am very, like, pro-mask, I'll just put that out there, because our hospital is full, and if I could have more staff, I could have more beds, I could have more patients in beds. But our hospital has been a COVID center pretty much since the beginning of this. We've been taking care of all these patients, very sick patients. And so making masks optional at school, I know you see the number where fit 5 to 18 don't have, we don't have any in the hospital right now. However, when you start talking about teachers and staff, you know, that's where your concern's going to come in, because if you have a lot of your teachers and staff becoming sick, even though you don't have to quarantine for as long, if they become sick enough to be hospitalized, then that's when you're going to have trouble, because then you're going to run out of staff, and you're going to have to end up going back virtual again, is our fear at the hospital. But the other part of this is, is that COVID's not the only problem, and it's not the only disease out there. And so when you're overburdening the hospital, if somebody has a heart attack, or a kid breaks a leg, or gets one of the various other viruses out there, like influenza and croup and RSV and other viruses like that, that's what puts them in the hospital. But right now, our offices and our emergency rooms in our hospital are so full that it's very difficult to get an appointment. We're talking about trying to get a test, I mean, trying to get an appointment to even treat any kind of illness, not just COVID, is where we're challenged. And so our healthcare system, every year before with the flu, we always see this huge bump in hospitalizations during January and February, basically from flu and other viruses. And so now, we're putting this on top of that. And so we're starting to see flu this year. Like, last year, we didn't see any flu. It was weird, but it was from the quarantining and the masking. This year, we're starting to see flu cases because of less masking and people are out. We always look forward to the Christmas break as physicians and as healthcare providers because that always, if you go back and look at the historical data, you always get a dip in early January in the number of cases of flu and other viruses, and then it catches up in February. Well, we're not getting that break anymore with COVID because COVID's there. This year, you're going to put other viruses on top of that, and so you're just overburdening the healthcare system. And our children are the ones that want to suffer because not the ones who get COVID, this seems like a milder variant, but our hospitals are so full that children who are getting other viruses, and adults who are getting viruses and getting other illnesses who have to be in the hospital, the system's just so overburdened, you know? If you look, you have to wait 10, 12 hours in the emergency room to be seen. So my concern is that when kids go back to school, if they're not masked, and our adults that are taking care of them are not masked, and they get sick, that you're just going to overburden the community even more.
If I could just build on that a little, in the sense of, some of the unique things we're seeing with Omicron is that it is highly infectious and it is spreading quickly. The incubation period is only three days. The incubation period of some of the other variants has been longer. And so what you have is one person's infected, Omicron is easily spread, they're infecting as many as five or more people, and it's spreading more quickly because every three days, people are, you know, are sick quickly and then spreading it more. So right now, when you look at a hospital that is already full, and then if you have a school that isn't staying masked, you're exposing three, you know, that's why you saw our numbers go from 500 two weeks ago to 3,000 cases in one week. It spreads quickly. Without masks in place, it will spread even more quickly, and some of you may have heard the data that we're hearing, that we had the most hospitalizations ever in our country yesterday at over 103,000. Hospitalizations lag behind cases spreading. So if the hospital's already challenged, and then we aren't taking community mitigation strategies, it will have an impact on hospitalization several weeks from now, creating inability to provide good quality care for any health condition. So it's all interrelated in why hospitalizations has always been considered an important metric to be looking at, and why Omicron and its infectiousness and quick incubation period makes this even more important for us to keep an eye on. Okay. All right, so let's move on. So just really quickly, graphically, this is from the CDC. I had a question about how many people in the hospital have COVID by vaccination status, so looking at the difference. So on the left, you can see our 12 to 17-year-olds from June to November 2021. The blue line is our unvaccinated 12 to 17-year-olds, and then the green line are vaccinated. And then on the right, for our over-18, 18 and over, blue, unvaccinated and green, vaccinated, again, from, this one's January through November of 2021 here. Okay, so I had a couple of really good questions about future preparation, so, you know, we have to work in the now, but I think it's important that we're continuing to think about, you know, next month, next school year, how are we going to continue to work together and work through this? So as a district, how should we continually plan to address the ongoing effects of COVID to ensure the safety of our students and staff, because we know COVID isn't going to magically disappear? Wouldn't that be nice? So we really believe that we have to use every single mitigation strategy possible to keep kids in school, so physically in school, before discussing virtual options. And then likewise, we really feel like we need to strengthen our partners and our partnerships to provide needed behavioral and mental health supports for our families. So we, at CHA, have developed a Behavioral Health Department. I know you guys have really really invested a lot in behavioral health services for our students as well. Are there any new COVID strategies or initiatives being discussed at the local or state level that will help increase in-person learning for our students? So Mr. Basile's talked about the new toolkit, so the five days out really reduces, you know, if you remember, 24 months ago, everything was 14 days. So then it was 10, and then it had a seven-day option, so now we're down to five. So major changes to the toolkit that are relating to just, not just students, but also staff, and that's a change as well. So changes to the test requirements to return after day five, essentially, there's no test required. And then health leaders need to continue to discuss, you know, when does this pandemic become an endemic? And you talk to 10 different people, you get 10 different answers on that one, so. All right, so our recommendations in writing. We would ask that you vote to require masks at Cabarrus County schools and our buildings through the end of January. If that is not something that this board chooses to do tonight, if masks do remain optional, to pause the Test to Stay program until we return to orange. And just as a reminder, your current metrics as they stand, that would get us back in that below 10% positive criteria, and then less than 728 positive cases in Cabarrus in the previous 14-day period. So with that, Ms. Grimsley, how would you like to proceed with questions?
I'm just going to open it up to the board and start, yeah, actually, I'll begin with Ms. Sandage. Questions or comments?
Thank you all for coming and presenting to us, and when I call, answering my questions and getting back to me in a timely manner. I know that you guys have been inundated with a lot of things that are going on, and I just want you to know that I truly appreciate your work. I want to say that loud and clear. So some of my questions may need to be answered by Dr. Kapiki, or you guys may be able to answer them as well. So Erin, you pointed out on this with the question from the metrics. So my question to that is, what do we do, if I missed it somewhere, when we have two and two? So we've got, right now, we've got two in the green, which, from what I understand, you're recommending that we change what that looks like right now. And then we've got two in the red. So what is this board, and what decision is made at that point? Did we clarify that somewhere and I missed it?
I think I'm going to take that just real quick, just because we have had some discussions, so this may, this may be another question for another board member. But whatever comes out of tonight, really will go back to the task force, so that's our intention. Recommendations, the new data, the new metrics, we have not met yet again, y'all have not been pulled together because all the subsidies have not been made, but we will send this back tonight at the board's request, and I know that's the majority of the board, to put this information out there. That's why it needs to be updated. So we will send it back to the task force to take a look at that. And we, I did hear Erin say that the odd number out would be easier to, yes, keep up with versus an even number. Okay.
So in the interim to figuring it out, we're currently at two and two. What do we do, is what I'm asking?
So let's, let's move through, because that's a board decision, not just an individual board member, so we've got to really hear what everyone has to say and then just figure it out from there. So I hear you that that's your question, but let's just move through.
Okay, so we don't have an option. Got it. All right, so who's monitoring the five-day mask wear? So who's policing that? And, I mean, it sounds like another task to me.
So it is another task, but I will, again, I will go back to the wonderful teachers and administrators we have in the district. I mean, we have quarantines going on now, we have test-to-stay situations going on now. At every step, our administrators, our faculty and our staff have been nimble and quick and adapting. So it would continue to be our administrators and our staff and our teachers that would be monitoring that. I don't want to, I don't want to mislead anyone and say, you know, we have a mask police out there, because we don't. I think by and large, when we were masked, kids and adults did the best they could to stay masked, and it helped us. But it would definitely fall upon the administrators and the teachers.
So I guess my question is, somebody would know that this person tested positive, is that, am I understanding that correctly? And then they're going to be saying, hey, you've got to have on a mask. Am I seeing, am I hearing that correctly?
Yeah, well, you know, again, I don't want to mislead you. Yes, someone does know that there's a positive situation out there, and yes, someone does know where the quarantines are. When I say someone, obviously, the nurse would know who the positive person was, I'm positive the principals are aware who their positive cases are in their buildings. And then I would imagine both parties know what the quarantines are. I don't, I don't think I would be knowledgeable enough to say to you that 33,500 kids have masks on perfectly, we can monitor every single kid. But I think, I think, again, individual schools have done a good job. When we look at the breakdowns of a positive case outside of this metric, when I, when I, what I didn't, I didn't report to you today, because I don't have the updates, because the kids haven't been in school in two weeks, when we disaggregate the data and look at our positive cases and our quarantines, those numbers, if, remind the board that I get from the principals every Monday, that tells the story of what's going on in the schools. And when I look at that, we have pockets, we have clusters, and we have pockets of high quarantines in certain situations, and it's fluid. But when you look at those numbers, and I'm not trying to downplay COVID, y'all know how I feel about this and where I stand, but our administrators and our teachers have done a good job at monitoring the cases and the situation. The numbers indicate that they're doing a good job in terms of monitoring them.
Please don't hear me saying that folks are not doing a good job. I think our staff and just everybody is, in general, even this board, is going above and beyond what we can do. What I'm concerned about, however, is that we are asking someone to do an additional step, that how do they know who needs to put on a mask for five days? That's concerning to me. So I just want to make that known. I am by no means saying anybody is not doing their job or going above and beyond that.
And I'm not, I'm not inferring that, and I do understand where you're coming from, Ms. Sandage, and I know that you personally, and I know you and the rest of the board does support our teachers and our staff, and have done so since I've arrived, you've been nothing but positive in terms of supporting our staff, so I do know that. I'm not trying to infer that. I just want to be honest, I don't want to mislead you either and say there's one person in every building that is doing that. I think it's a collective body of people doing it.
Sounds very difficult, but thank you. What do we have in place for staff shortages when all of these quarantines start mounting up? Has that been discussed somewhere? Are we prepared for that?
So again, I think that we're as, we're as well-prepared as we can be at the moment. We have, actually, we have a meeting tomorrow morning with our cabinet folks, we're going to talk about emergency and contingency plans, because this variant, because it's so contagious, as we all know, and as I pointed out this evening, we are going to talk tomorrow morning about what those contingency plans look like. Yes, we have a plan to go virtual, to go online, we do not want to do that. I want kids in school, I want to remain open. It is clear, the evidence and the research certainly indicates that we need kids in school, and I will be adamant about that, that we want them in school at all times. I think our teachers would support that as well, everyone I've talked to in our community wants their kids in school. Anyway, in terms of what that contingency plan looks like, we're going to talk about what that looks like. I will tell you right now, as you know, and everyone knows, we're stressed in terms of not having enough bus drivers, not having enough workers, cafeterias, maintenance workers, teachers, substitutes. We're stressed, our system is stressed. So it's one of the things that we are concerned about with this new variant that's out there, that if it does hit the adults in the system that run the operation, that it could be detrimental, as the doctor pointed out tonight, the hospital's struggling, we certainly are struggling right now. And with the variant being out there, we don't want that to collapse or cause even more stress on the system, because we don't have the human capital to continue to replace people to do the jobs that we need done. We're already short.
Thank you. So I want to try to make this make sense, and then if you could help me understand how this plays out. So we have test and stay at the school, and that's available to students who opt, whose parents opt to allow them to do that, and for teachers or staff who opt to do it, right? So what if we've got a kid at home whose parent is sick, and as you just told us, it's very hard to get a test? I think you even have to pay for it now. You used to be able to just have symptoms and go somewhere and get a PCR, but I'm seeing now, you've got to pay the $180 for it, and a lot of people don't have that. But needless to say, when that parent is sick and they can't get a test, they could have a cold, they could have the flu, they could just have strep, or whatever. How do they know whether or not to send their kid to school? And what would your advice be to that parent? Or loved one, somebody who that kid has contact with that may potentially be going to school?
So let me just ask a clarifying question. Are you specifically talking about the Test to Stay program, or really just testing in general to make sure that that kid can come back to school?
In general. I'm a parent, I'm sick, my kid goes to our school, I don't know what I have, because I can't get tested. I won't keep my kid at school, but maybe somebody else may not do that. And like, they can't get tested, so they don't know what's going on with them. I mean, it's a 12-hour wait at the ER at this point.
At the ER?
Uh-huh.
We're, we're really strongly advising that folks not use the emergency room to get tested, because they need the emergency room beds to actually treat the folks who are sick, so that we are actively working at CHA.
Dr. Cole, that's a very important statement. Do you mind stepping to the mic, just so the viewing audience could hear what you said? Oh, that was a great statement, and I need to hear that.
Yes, we, and we put out a press release last week emphasizing this, that because the hospitals are so challenged right now, we are highly recommending that people do not use the emergency room to get a test. They will likely sit and wait there many, many hours to be able to get the test, because the hospital is trying to, they're triaging and trying to see the sick individuals first. And it's challenging them to keep up with everything. There are testing facilities, they are posted on our website, we encourage people to look at that. As we reported earlier, unfortunately, there is a long wait at those sites, but we have been actively working last week and early this week to get additional testing opportunities available, and we expect to have many hundreds of more tests available by the end of this week going into next.
Let me just clarify my question. My question is, I'm a parent or someone who has contact with a student who's going into a Cabarrus County school, I'm not feeling well, but I don't know what's wrong with me. And I can't get tested, so what am I doing with my kid?
And you're describing a very real-world situation that is happening probably quite frequently for our families.
Absolutely. Thank you for such thoughtful questions. So we are blessed to have school nurses in every school, and our school nurses are great at connecting our families to community resources. So dependent upon what that parent's symptoms are, the nurse would be able to help connect to resources, because maybe the parent doesn't even have COVID-like symptoms, and it wouldn't be appropriate to do a COVID test, but the nurse can still help to connect to those resources. If it sounds like COVID, so there's, you know, there's certain set of symptoms that we're looking at, when we have a supply of rapid antigen test, we have been testing family members of students. So that has been a resource that we've offered. Right now, that, you know, we've already discussed the fact that there's such a short supply of tests, what we would have to do is try to help connect that family to a place where there are still free tests available. So the reality is, they would need to reach out to their school nurse to talk through that situation. I don't think there's a one-size-fits-all to answer your question, but to know that the school nurse is a resource person for them, to help them, then decide what that decision is. You know, maybe what the parent says is, I have a fever, but in reality, their temperature has never been over 99, and the nurse is just able to educate and get that student back to school immediately. So what I would say is, if parents are in that situation, to reach out to the nurse to ask the questions and kind of talk through the situation, and then the nurse would be able to provide guidance.
I got two more questions, I'm sorry, I know I've got a lot of them. So is there, and these are questions that I received, is there data showing an area where there is mandatory mask that is significantly lower in transmission? I think that's a great question, and I don't know that there's an answer to it. So what the person is trying to figure out is, why are we going to mandate masks for our kids if we can't show that there's another region who's mandating masks and their transmission rates are significantly lower?
So the original ABC Collaborative study, which was performed right here in North Carolina, showed exactly that, that schools that had mandated mask-wearing had lower transmission rates of COVID. In addition, it was shared verbally, although I didn't see the actual written citation by the ABC Collaborative just about a month ago, that right now, they are continuing to see that in school districts with required mask-wearing, they have significantly less clusters and spread. So I don't have the exact amount, you know, two or three times, they did share that data verbally in a meeting recently. Want to get that actual citation so that I can share it more widely.
Okay, can you just maybe share that with Erin or with Dr. Kapiki, so that I can look at that as well? Okay. My last question is, what formula do you use to calculate the percent positive? So if I go to the website and I see this 15.4, what's your formula to get to that?
The percent positivity is simply how many tests were done in your county that week. So if a thousand tests, well, let's, let's make that easier. If 100 tests were done last week, a 15.4% positivity means 15 of those tests were positive.
Thank you.
Mr. Farr?
Well, this is kind of, I think we've been down this road quite a few times. I appreciate you ladies' information, I know y'all put quite a bit of work into presenting this to us, and I think a couple of us, you know, going back a year, year and a half ago, we knew we were going to be here, just like we are today. You still have the same news, and most of us still have our same beliefs, and, and try to figure out, you know, the best way to handle it. I know we're in cold and flu season, the variant now seems to be, I had a lot of friends that have had it in the last two or three weeks, and, and most of them, that's what it pretty much was, was a, I call it a chest cold. I mean, that's the symptoms they've had, but they were tested positive, which is, in this time of year, in this part of the country, our schools experience quite a bit of it, and that's not going to change. With the mask, the masking, and I know, I know what you're going, but if the mask really works, and y'all are firm, constant believers in it, I get that, if I, if I don't have a mask on, you and I together, you have a mask on, I don't have a mask on, what's the big issue?
So what I would say is that the big issue is that your respiratory droplets are then being shared across this room, whereas if I, if we both have a mask on, then it's going to protect you and I, because both of us block those respiratory droplets. Just to go back to what you're saying about the severity of the symptoms, it is a blessing that most people are experiencing mild symptoms. But what I would say is, let's also take a look at what Dr. Pons is seeing in the hospital, that not everybody is having those mild symptoms. So if we think about protecting our entire community, we think about our children who have compromised immune systems, or have significant chronic health conditions, who want to be able to come to school, or our staff who have those same things, that's what we really need to look at protecting. So while the majority of people may have mild symptoms, there are other people who would not be as fortunate. For some of those people, they're those who chose not to be vaccinated or were not able to be vaccinated. But I think that it's important not just to look at a small group of people who have, you know, the luckiness of having mild symptoms, but looking at the entire group and considering what can happen and how can we protect others.
And I would like to add, one of my colleagues that works here in the community, Dr. Charlie Rhodes, has worked here for 40 years, many of you might know him. His big concern is, is a lot of times grandparents and parents are taking care of these children, and he, he has an older population of patients, and he has seen so many of them die over the last year and a half, two years, because their children and their grandchildren bring the virus home. And so it's, for me, it's very personal, it's heartbreaking for me, but I don't know if you looked at the data, I dug into it today, but since December 20th, when Erin put the data up, we've had about one death per day in the county from COVID, not, not anything else, just from COVID. So that's heartbreaking to me. And so wearing a mask, I've been wearing a mask for two years now, and I haven't had COVID, and I've been tested one time, because my niece came at Christmas time this year, and she, we've all been vaccinated, she had very mild symptoms, and the only reason she knew was she was having a procedure and got tested. And I was tested, didn't have it, I wore a mask with my family in my house, and I don't love it, but, you know, it's what we're, it's what I'm doing to protect patients, so that I can be at work. And the other thing I would say about that is, is, you know, the children come to school and they wear their mask and they go home, like, I have nurses and doctors who have children, who are in the school system, and I need their kids to be in school, because I need them to be at work. And if their kid's homesick, they can't come to work. And if their kid's homesick, they can't come to work. And that's stressing the healthcare system. So I didn't mention that part about parents of children, of school-aged children at the hospital who can't be there. And so they're protecting their children and their children, you know, we're trying to protect each other. So that's the benefit of the mask-wearing.
I mean, I get a lot of it, but you know, if you, if you look at, if you go around the community, and I've stressed this every time we discuss it, which is way too much. But there's not masks, I mean, very few kids are wearing masks. Erin knows, I go to a lot of athletic events. Kids don't have masks on, very few. But yet, we determine that they're getting it at school and taking it home. I don't think, I think they're getting it all over the place and taking it home, not at school. I think the school's probably the safest place in this county.
Well, I think a lot of events are outside that you're going to.
No, they're not.
Well, some of them are, and so that's helpful. And I mean, I go to church every Sunday like this and you know, I see kids wearing masks and kids not. But I think that when you congregate children in school, we know that when we put kids back to school together, that we see other viruses increase like flu. So I think that, you know, that we're gonna see COVID go up in the next two weeks even more when school gets back in.
And that was another thing I was gonna ask, you know, we talk, and I look at elementary school students. Because I've talked to quite a few teachers and it's perfectly clear, I mean, we'd be really naive and dumb to think that they're not wearing their masks repeatedly and they don't have green and yellow and snot everywhere. That's got to be, that's not good for anyone. And also this board, we have to look, we lose sight of mental health. At some point, that's gonna be a measurement, you know, maybe six months down the road, but we're gonna get off of COVID for a while, then we're gonna talk about the mental health of our students. And that's a concern that we as a board have to look at as well. But I thank you very much. I appreciate all your hard work and thanks a lot.
I would just say one more thing about the mental health. I agree, but I think that the children understand why they're wearing a mask a lot of times. I had a partner whose six-year-old child came home, she had COVID and she cried for two days because she thought she had infected her whole family and she was scared she had killed her parents. So I mean, this mental health all the way around, I understand that.
Yeah, but I think, I think fear, people like fear.
Well, I mean, he wasn't spreading fear with his child. I mean, she just, she hears things, she's watched the news, he doesn't talk about it with his children. The children know, they know that, you know, that it's dangerous.
So I have a lot of notes, so I'm sorry if they're all over the place. I did want to just kind of piggyback a little bit on what you said about the fear piece of it. That breaks my heart more than anything that that child thought that he was gonna kill his parents. I think that is something that we have done a horrible job of as a society, is making these children fear that they have killed somebody because they might have come home with some kind of symptoms. Also to piggyback a little bit on what we were just talking about previously with the flu. And we've talked about this before, with other viruses that we've seen and see on a regular basis, especially during these winter months. Flu, RSV, all of those things. Never ever have we ever asked children to wear a mask during these seasons. And these viruses have been deadly, just like COVID has been previously. You have people that have died from flu that have immunocompromising conditions. You have people that die from RSV from having immunocompromising physicians as well. I do have a couple of questions. I have read some studies here recently that have indicated that cloth masks specifically are not working. Do y'all have any data on the cloth masks specifically? Because I have read several articles and several news stories that have come out specifically about cloth masks.
The research has generally shown that mask-on-mask is helpful no matter what that mask is. It's definitely more helpful, two-layer, two-layer mask. And, you know, obviously as we go up to KN95s, N95s, that certainly becomes more and more effective. I also just want to comment on what you said about people dying from flu and that there's an order of magnitude to keep in mind here. On average, 30 to 60,000, 70,000 people die a year from flu in our country. In one year, we lost 600,000 people to COVID. So the order of magnitude is...
Well, I understand that, but I think the families of the people that died from flu would think it's just as serious as COVID.
Absolutely, but there are very, very many, many more families.
So, and I noticed in the press release that you guys had sent out that you are now recommending that they wear two layers of masks to school. Is that something that you, because I didn't hear you talk about that, but it was a press release that came out from the Cabarrus Health Alliance about wearing two masks. Is that something that you're still recommending or did I read that incorrectly?
It's not two masks, it's a mask that has a double layer.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not new. We talked about that. I think Ms. Adcock, if I remember correctly, we talked about masks last year. Talked about the ideal mask having more than one layer, so that's what that was referring to.
Okay, so...
It's like this mask has two layers to it, but I'm not wearing two masks.
Is that what we're normally doing in the schools right now, is two-layered mask? Or, because the only mask that I've ever seen, for the most part, is children with the cloth mask and it's just a single layer?
I think you would be, well, most cloth masks that I've seen, the ones that my children have that I buy at Target and Walmart and all the normal places, do have two layers. What Ms. Carpenter has on has multiple layers to it, so...
Yeah, that's a surgical mask.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm talking about just the regular cloth masks.
Yep. So obviously a homemade mask, someone would need to double that up on their own.
All right, and then can folks that are asymptomatic spread COVID?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, because there seems to be some, some information out there that says if you're asymptomatic, then it's not, you're not able to spread that. Then other information that says that you can spread it if you're asymptomatic, so if you are asymptomatic, you are contagious.
Yeah, I think that's a great point to bring up for community education, that being asymptomatic, especially if you're in no close contact, you can be contagious.
How are they, with this Omicron variant, how are we determining what variant people are having? Because I know when we talked about Delta previously, that it was, the test had to be sent for DNA testing. Are we still doing that currently and is that how we're determining that this is an Omicron variant?
So what they do is they'll take a certain, a representative percentage of samples, they'll send them off to the CDC and to the state labs. And they test to see which variant is predominant in your area. And so the last thing I saw from the CDC was about 75% Omicron, 25% here in this, in this area in the southeast. But in other parts of the country, the Delta is still the dominant virus, the dominant variant.
So that, actually that one that you talked about from the CDC at 75%, I think they kind of walked that back last week and said that it's actually about 23%?
The one I saw Saturday said we were about 73 to 75%.
Okay.
But I will have to go and double check that.
And then my other point was regarding the hospitalizations. So to your point, Dr. Pons, you had mentioned that, and I appreciate you saying this, that the hospitalization numbers are based on the staffing. Not necessarily the number of beds that we have, but how many staff are there to be able to assist those patients. And what we just said, based on the data that you guys presented, is right now that there are no children that are in the hospital between five and 18 years old.
At ATRM Health Cabarrus.
At ATRM Health Cabarrus, right, I understand. You know, at this point, we can only do this based on what's going on in Cabarrus County, obviously. I do want people to understand also that, you know, part of the issue with staffing and hospitalizations right now is an issue that we created on our own. They had to lay off and fire a lot of staff in the healthcare industry who did not want to get vaccinated, which has created a lot of this staffing and these shortages right now. So I think a lot of the problems that we have going on right now were created based on all of these decisions that we've, you know, that have been made previously. And unfortunately, I just don't see the staffing issue at this point getting any better. And this is an issue that we have throughout the country, not just here.
At ATRM, it was a very small percentage because persons were able to file for, were able to file for exemptions, for healthcare exemptions and for sincerely held belief exemptions. So it was a very small percentage who, as far as I have heard, were actually did leave because of it.
Right.
But I will tell you that a lot of the problem with healthcare right now is not that. It's that we have just been so overstressed and overburdened by COVID that it's just very difficult. And so, it's really hard right now.
And my other question was, one of the things that you said Erin regarding the recommendations that you guys had was to pause the test to stay. Why would we need to pause that?
Yep, so if we are in a, you know, take 15% or take 21%, you know, take over 3,000 cases right now. So if I'm coming to school test to stay, I'm a known confirmed close contact, I'm coming back. I'm sitting next to Bonnie in my classes who chooses to be unmasked. I'm masked because I have to be for test to stay, but Bonnie's coming back, mask optional and she's choosing not. We don't feel like that is good, solid public health recommendation to say that yes, that you can come back after being a known exposure confirmed, potentially infectious, still testing negative, of course, but in a test-to-stay program. So if that were the case, we would need to pause that until we got back down into the orange zone below the 10% and the 728, unless we were mask-required, just from an ethical decision point and putting risk considerations in place.
Okay, I think that's all that I have for right now. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Ms. Carpenter? Ms. Carpenter, will you key up, please?
I'm not keyed up. First of all, I would also like to thank you all for everything that you've done. Our nurses, I know they have gone well beyond what has been asked of them and we really appreciate that. And for everything you've done for our community and for us, again, I can't say how much I appreciate that. Now to get from my questions. Number one, Erin, you had mentioned about that positivity rate because I can tell you, I look at that thing all over the place. I have read more, I think, the last two and a half years than I've ever read in my life. But one of the things, I did look at that state chart and it's showing, I think it was the, for us, they were showing 21.9%. And you said that is a rolling rate? What is that?
Yeah, so what we've got here and what we report to Dr. Kapiki and Mr. Basileis once a week is a report that the state sends based off a seven-day fixed period.
The report here, the 15.4, sorry, is a seven-day report that we get once a week. We send to Dr. Kapiki and Mr. Basileis. But what the state does is they have results that are reported to them 24/7/365. They are updating that on their site. And so, it kind of gives us a leading indicator of to where we might be going. We like to see that number lower than the weekly report, but right now we are seeing that 21.3 or 21.9%. So hopefully when our weekly report comes in, we will have stayed at that 15% and not bumped up. But the rolling average is telling us that it's slightly higher than the 15%.
And the reason I say that, I looked at everything around us and everybody seems to be, Union's 22.3, Ardell's 20.6. Everybody seems to be in that higher 20% bracket because I do look at everything around us. And so, everything, with the state being at 29.7, that kind of tells me we're heading in that 20% bracket. So that, and like I say, MEC's 20.2. So that kind of, if I go by that, it looks like that's the way we're heading. And two, our hospitalizations being at 103, we have doubled with that. So all those indicators are telling me we're not going the right direction. And one of the things that, like I say, that concerns me greatly and that rate though, it's not where it needs to be. And you had mentioned about those indicators. I am really concerned because those two indicators are with our children in school. And our superintendent had mentioned that those were, both were numbers in December when we were in school. So really, when, if this goes back to the task force, I want to look at something we need to consider when we're out of school. Like for a break in the, in the spring or when, in December, when we're on, we need indicators when we're not in school, if we have to make a decision. And both of those are when students are in school. So, you know, we have to have good indicators, something when we're in school or not in school. And both of those have to do when students are in school. So we need something that is good all the time. So make sure the task force realizes that, so...
We will summarize what needs to go back to the task force.
Okay, so I'm with you. I'm not sure about those two indicators. Now, my question is, and the main thing to get to the meat of the matter. My question is, is a week gonna make a difference? Now, from what I gather, it would on mask or not to mask. If we need to do a vote now or if we wait a week? Because we usually vote at our regular meeting. So I want to know, do we need to vote tonight or is a week gonna make a difference? Now, from what I kind of gather from Bonnie or from you, that really a decision needs to be made with this variance that seems to move quickly and with children. Because we have mask breaks, we have, you know, those children take the mask off to eat and, you know, it's better to have masks on. And we do have to protect our community, our teachers, our staff, our bus driver, I mean, everybody to protect the community, to keep this spread down. But I want to hear it from y'all. Yes, no, what, I would just like to hear it directly. Will a week make a difference?
We would highly recommend that you make that decision as soon as possible.
Do what?
We highly recommend to make the decision as soon as possible to go to a mask-required.
But will a week make a difference? Yes, no?
I believe that you can see from the data that we've presented tonight how much of a difference a week makes.
So you say yes?
Yes.
One of the things, if I may add, can I add one more thing? One of the things I would also add is, you know, if you believe that someone is infectious or not, or takes it home or does not, you know, if you think about the practicality of quarantining kids. So it's another way for us to allow this post-holiday, what we're hoping is a post-holiday surge to settle down. Let's get our high schoolers through exams without being quarantined so that we can get into hopefully February, settle back down. So, you know, we never really settled back down all the way from, coming back from Thanksgiving. And so we were already starting going into the Christmas holiday at a bit of a disadvantage. So I think what I'd also like to say is, we're not asking you to vote for masks till the end of the school year. If you don't even want to go through the end of January, if you go through Martin Luther King Weekend, you know, give everybody a time to get back, settle down. Let's get these testing supplies back in place where they need to be, both at the community and the school level. So I think you've got some options, but I do think a decision tonight is what we would want or ask for.
Ms. Adcock?
Thank you. Thank you again for the really good news of the five days. That's great for quarantines. I think that keeping our schools open has to be our top priority. It just does. The thing that keeps me up at night is thinking about the learning loss our kids have already gone through and how are we gonna make that up as a school district. You know, operationally, I heard Dr. Kapiki say that we already have decreasing staff. We can't get our staff and it really concerns me if we have more staff that are out. What are we gonna do? How is this board gonna handle that? Because it is gonna be back in our lap if it comes to that. And I would like to ask Dr. Kapiki a question about other schools in our area. Do we know how Kannapolis Schools... Do we know how Kannapolis Schools and Rowan Salisbury Schools opened today under mask optional or masked?
I did have a meeting last week with several superintendents in the area. I do know that Kannapolis City Schools is masked. I cannot speak for Rowan at this time, but I could find out that this evening and let you know by tomorrow morning. Mr. Fur is saying that they're optional, so I could find out, confirm that. But I know Kannapolis is masked at the moment. There were about, I'd say about maybe eight superintendents at the meeting last week in the local areas, the counties. I'd say probably half were masked and half were mask optional. But I could also get you the, I think the last time we looked at that, if my memory serves me correctly, I think there were 44 counties that were, county school districts that were mask optional and the rest of them, which would be 50 plus, were masked. I can get you that data tomorrow as well. I believe Dr. Probst, you pulled that report for me. If you could get that report for me and share that with the board tomorrow, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. I think all the other questions I had have already been answered.
Okay, so I'm going to wrap up with a few that I don't think was covered or maybe needs a little bit more clarification. So one of the issues that we really have as a challenge is when we had a report the last time that showed quarantine numbers and, you know, exposure rates and what takes place in the school system. And I had a lot of conversations with parents and teachers over the weekend. And I said, you know, you hate to say it this way, but it really is how some of us feel. We can't put these kids in a bubble at school, you know? Even when you say, let's mask them, mandate the mask. When you think about the amount of time that they're not in a mask at lunchtime, you know, the CDC has recommended they don't be masked outside. That's their front screen page, you know, about making sure kids remain in school, you know, masks are not to be used out in recess and times that they're outside. So there's all those exposure times, which is where we saw, that's where our exposures were, are. You know, they've got the mask breaks. You've got to figure in, you know, some little, a lot of small kids don't wear them correctly. You know, teachers have talked about, you know, we continuously are saying, pull your mask up, get it off your knee, quit twirling it around your finger. And that's not minimizing, that's reality, what goes on in these classrooms. You know, so there's a lot of challenges to it. You know, yes, we could say mask mandate, and we have. And we even in our own reports, it showed because of those blocks of times that this exposure rates are actually taking place are things we can't control. You know, the social distancing, they're doing it as much as they possibly can. There's just such a large, if we could put these kids in at seven and check them out at four and they had a mask on that extreme amount of time, the whole entire day long, no exposure rate would take place. But it does. So what are your thoughts about that? Because we get more questions about that. You know, why are you not making sure they have them on at recess? Or why are you not making sure, you know? We have to abide by the laws, you know, they can't have them on when they're eating lunch. And that is where the exposure rates took place. So what do you suggest about those challenges?
I have to make two comments and then I would love for the others to also comment. No one mitigation strategy is completely foolproof. And the whole point of what we try to do is have multiple mitigation strategies in place to reduce the spread. We can't get spread down to zero, we're not, we get that. But when you have masks on, even though there are periods of time when they don't have masks on, there will be less close contacts, there will be less transmission, not as many kids will be exposed. Can you get it down to zero? No, because people have to eat, people go outside to play, but you reduce. And in fact, I believe that your data shows that very clearly.
So can we, right, and I wasn't sure if y'all were even in here.
The number of contacts draw, increased when masks come off and go down when masks are on.
So we're going to pull that slide back up because we're going to review it because I know one of the board members wanted to see that again. So another question, I think it was kind of confusing that I got over the weekend. There are some people that think that that positivity rate is our whole population. You know, they think that when they're looking at that, or we're hearing that positivity rate, it's the whole population. So, you know, we know there's 220,000 people in the Cabarrus County. So some people are interpreting that, that 15.4% of our population, you know, has tested positive for COVID, and that's not reality. So can you please reaffirm how that positivity rate is established? That it's only the number and percentage of people that are actually testing? So there was 5,168, I think that was on our last slide. So that means there was a little over 700 that actually tested positive. So that means over 4,200 or whatever that number is didn't test positive and didn't become symptomatic. Is that correct? Yes?
But, you know, one of the other things we hear people say is, well, if you do more tests, you're going to get a higher positivity rate. That is not correct. That's why it's a positivity rate and not total positive.
Not, sure.
You always want to be looking at a rate. So that's what corrects for whether there was a week where you had 10,000 tests versus a week where you had only 2,000 tests.
So I, you know, wasn't trying to minimize that question because they were very sincere in asking it. But I guess you can assume that the 4,200 were negatives, correct? So you're saying, what is, you know, so this person's really into data, we all talk about data and using the metrics. So they were saying, well, why are we not using a data that shows the negativity rate? You know, the positivity rate is important, but why are we not using the negativity rate? Well, I don't know what, how y'all use your, you know, your data or your metrics, but are all the negatives reported, number one? And then they were asking about the test at home. So are those actually reported? How would you know that, you know, if there's a lot of people testing?
Right, many of them may not get reported. You really want to be looking at the, you know, the positive tests per total. It has some weaknesses because many people who are testing right now, they're testing because their employer is saying they must test, or they're testing because they want to travel and the, you know, where they're trying to go is required. So you have a lot of people using testing more as what we would call surveillance or screening than because they've actually believed that they have COVID. So again, it's a marker of what is going on in your community. When you're positive, you know, when only 5% of the people being tested are positive, that says something very different about what's happening with transmissibility than when 21% are positive.
Sure, no, I get that. I just wanted to be clarified that it's not of our whole population of our entire county.
It is not, no.
Yeah, okay. So when we were out of school, so for two and a half weeks, we're not in school and the numbers go up, we assume that just what we pretty much talked about, it's because of what's going on in the community. People are testing more because it's mandatory for travel. Employees are asking you to do it as you come back. So there's a lot of increased testing. So this next week, that would be important information because now that week will catch up where people won't have been testing much probably. When do you start catching that data? Is it on the Wednesday? I can't remember. I know that y'all start reassessing your data and send out the new numbers. So now that that'll settle down, people won't be traveling, they'll be back at work, you know, not all these functions will be going on. When will the next batch of how many people are testing and that positivity rate be checked again?
Yes, so like I mentioned earlier, we had expected it today, so we would really expect it tomorrow if it's not already sitting in Dr. Coyle's inbox as we speak. So the states, you know, again, they capture a seven day block of time for number of cases, positives and negatives, percent positives, those sorts of things.
Okay.
Hopefully tomorrow.
Right, so Erin, one more time. So with these at-home test kits, which people have a lot more access to now when it becomes more available, they won't be accessing at the doctor's office or presenting at the ER for those tests as much as they've had to when they weren't available. And I'm sure you probably do ask, but are people reporting those when they're positive? And/or are they reporting the negatives as well? So, you know, is that a true number? Is that number figured into that positivity rate?
Yes, so that's one of the barriers that I talked about when I said, you know, really the number of positives is probably underreported and it's not just unique to us, that's, you know, globally. So some people will call us and say, you know, I tested positive or my child tested positive. And so they would be captured, but, you know, many people, many people don't. And then the same for the negative test as well. So it just depends. And of course, with school back in session, you're going to have more parents calling their principal and their school nurse saying, you know, so-and-so is going to be absent because they're positive, and so we're going to capture them that way. But, so it really depends, both for positives and for negatives.
Okay. And just on some of the information that we had before, are we pretty staffed now with the extra people in the schools as far as the nurses being helped with CHA staff?
We've got six additional going through orientation that were hired directly with us and not through a staffing agency, changed up their classification to be a clinical office assistant or medical office assistant. So, you know, we're hoping that those tweaks are helpful, so we're certainly getting there. But we've talked about workforce challenges tonight and certainly we're not immune to those as well.
Okay, all right, great.
Board members, are there any other comments or questions? Would you like a second round? Ms. Sandich, do you have something else?
Yeah, this is relative to the metrics that's up. So Dr. Kapicki, we do have one or two schools that are mask mandated and have been since the start of school. Is that correct?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So is it the early college or whoever's directly with RCC, they've been mask mandated this entire time? Is that correct?
I'd have to check on that. I'm not aware of any school in the system being mask mandated. You're asking about the early colleges, I would have to talk to the principal, Mrs. Black there, and then the early college, the tech college would be Mr. Fishback. Well, I know they're not, Fishback, excuse me. The early college technology, I'm pretty certain they're not. And I'm trying to remember if the, I don't think the early colleges either, but I can check on that.
Okay, please check on it. And if you do, do we have data from that school? Like for example, we're looking at, you know?
Sure, I can tell you what that is right now if you have questions on it.
Ms. Sandich, do you have something else?
No, that was it.
Mr. Fur?
Yes, Mr. Aldrich, still here. Did Bentley?
Let's give Dr. Kapicki a minute.
Spencer, no? Okay.
While you're doing that, Mr. Fur, comments or questions?
No questions, but just thank you ladies very much.
Ms. Black?
I'm just curious about the vaccinations. So for, oh gosh, I don't know, probably a year, we were told that if everybody would just get the vaccines, that everything would just be okay and it would go away. And so we're obviously not going to see that happen at this point. Now we've got people who are vaccinated fully, not having the booster, who are now being honestly pretty much treated the same as those who are unvaccinated. Where do you guys see this going with these vaccines? Is it going to be a booster every few months that folks are going to have to get in order to maintain? What are, kind of what are y'all talking about here as we go through the year?
Well, I think it's important to acknowledge that everybody didn't get vaccinated. And when we leave a percentage of the population vulnerable, we leave the potential for variants open as well. And so, you know, we were hopeful that, in Cabarrus County especially, we would reach that, you know, 90% mark. And I'd have to look, it's on the other slide, I think it's 56%. And so, you know, I'm not sure, I'll let Dr. Pons and Dr. Coyle talk about where we're going with boosters. But I think that continues to evolve as we have a large percentage of the population who remains vulnerable to these variants as well.
Are we taking into consideration folks who have already had COVID and are no longer, I mean, you know, essentially in that way have already, you know, they've got the antibodies as well. So how far does that go as far as vaccination? We just don't very often talk about natural immunity and...
So research is showing that the natural immunity is waning after three to six months and that in fact, previous infection from COVID does not seem to be overly protective for people with the Omicron variant. So it's not a sole answer to the problem of having been infected previously. So, and research is showing that people who have both had the infection and been vaccinated are much less likely to be hospitalized or be very sick and die than those who only had the infection.
So boosters forever? Is that what we're...
Yeah, so basically, the flu vaccine that we get every year, that some people get every year, the flu vaccine, so that flu is leftover from the pandemic of 1918. So COVID is going to become like flu endemic to the population where it'll just keep mutating because we didn't squash it all at once. So keep mutating, so every year with your flu vaccine, you'll get a COVID vaccine, they'll probably combine them together, if that's my prediction.
Yeah, that's, I think we have to stop thinking about things in terms of booster shots and think about, this is a virus that has the ability to mutate and create variant after variant. That is flu. That's what flu does. That's why we need a flu shot every year. That's why we can't get a flu shot today and never get another flu shot. So the way we have to address infectious agents that have the capacity to mutate is by having probably, you know, I wish I had the crystal ball that predicted this, but my best assumption is we're going to probably need a COVID vaccine every year.
Just like the flu.
So do you see masks? Oh, sorry, I wasn't keyed up. Do you see masks being something that we have to discuss forever at this point?
Well, I was reading a Cochrane review today in preparation to come tonight, and what that is, is they look at a bunch of different studies, they'll pull them all together. If you don't have enough ends, you have enough numbers in a study, you can take multiple studies that are similar and you can pull them together and look at the information. It was a pretty interesting one because it said, first of all, masks have been around since the 14th or 15th century from the plague. And so they, in the beginning of the century, in the beginning of the 20th century, we had a lot of masking because of the flu. And it, and people, and so people, as you may see in the far east in the wintertime in their winter months, they still mask there. It's just fallen out of favor in the western population. So it's an option for people, it'll probably become something you see more of. But I mean, as this becomes more endemic in the population, the problem is, is when it first started, it was a novel virus. It jumped from an animal to a human. And then it got, it spread so quickly, we had no defense or immunity against it, and that's why it was so insidious, moved so quickly, killed so many people. And as it continuously circulates through the population, the Omicron variant showing it, it'll get better. It'll get, the Omicron is good because it's very, very, very fast, very, it's not very virulent, so it's not, we think, that it's not as virulent, so it's not killing people as quickly, although a lot of people are dying from it still. But it's more, what's the word I'm looking for? Transmissible, thank you. So it's a great virus, transmits really easily, but doesn't make you too sick so you still feel like going out in the population and spreading it to everybody. And that's what we're seeing the Omicron doing. This is just the natural evolution of viruses.
Thank you.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yeah, I did have one question about the state, what is it? Stay pro?
Test and stay.
The, what was it?
Test and stay.
Test and stay. Do you still have to test three times with that program?
If you're in a mask required... I'm sorry, if you're in a mask required environment, it looks like the newest guidelines say twice. And if you're in an optional, then the guideline's saying three tests.
Three times, so you still have to do that? Okay.
Ms. Adcock?
I don't have any other questions.
I can clarify that. So to clarify on the early colleges, the early college, tech school, they are mask optional, they follow the Cabarrus County School rules. The early college that's associated with the Rowan County Community College, they follow the Rowan County Community College's rules. So they are mask mandated. They are also virtual from January 7th to January 24th. And all of those kids that are in an early college with Rowan Community College, they are on the campus with the Rowan County Community College.
So with that, do we have numbers that suggest them being mask mandated are different from our mask optional? I hope I'm making sense, John.
You are. I'd have to go back and look at the weekly totals. I'd have to pull apart the, and I have, but I would have to look at the principal reports from week to week. The most recent one I have, the early college at RCC had three positives and two quarantines. And the early college of technology had two positives and two quarantines.
Okay, thanks.
So I know one asked to look at the quarantine data again, and I guess that's what you've got pulled up. Can someone walk us back through that? And is that the latest data pool? Was December the 20th?
Right, so what you see there is from December 20th is the most recent data that we have prior to the Christmas break. We had 125 cumulative positives across the district in all 43 schools. schools. And we had 732 quarantines through all those schools. And when you look at the last column, about 2% of 15 kids that were quarantined became positive. The ratio there, when you see the 5.9 to 1 means that for every quarant, for every positive case, there were about 5.9 kids quarantined.
So board members, I'm not sure who asked that, but is that, does that give you the information? Does anyone else have a question regarding that?
I do. I have a question. If you look at a number, it's like 125 positives in September 27th, and you go over to quarantines, it's 362. And you come down and look at 125 December 20th, and we had 732. What's the difference in the number of students that we quarantined? Is that double?
Well, the difference, the difference, the assumption I would make there is that you were masked, so September 27th, you had 125 positives, 362 quarantines. December 20th, you had the same amount of positive, you had 732 quarantines. The only difference there was that we were mask optional in that situation.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Tammy.
I just want to point out that these numbers are reflective of those students who end up on the official sharepoint. So these are students who have a known positive test, and then that causes close contacts at school. All schools have what they call their internal tracking document. So we have a lot of students whose parents are reporting symptoms or report a home test that's positive, and they aren't able to come to school, but those numbers aren't being tracked. So I just think that's really important to know that, you know, these are the official positives, these are the official close contacts, but you also have students who aren't showing up on this, who are missing school because they're still getting that same isolation guidance as presumptive positives. So those are going to be your home tests that are not reported as official tests, but we still have to handle them as presumptive cases.
Okay, board members, any other comments or questions?
Purple then, this is when we were...
Can you key up, Ms. Carpenter?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
This purple, that was when we were unmasked, or is that when we were masked?
Correct. From October 25th to December 20th, which is shaded in purple, is when we were mask optional.
Okay.
So, and I want to make sure that's clarified too, because the viewing audience can see that. So when August the 23rd down to October the 18th, we were mask mandate, and we started out with more positives. Is that correct?
That's accurate.
So in, let's just say, August the 23rd, 215 positives, quarantined 574. But October the 25th, we started with mask optional, we're down to 48 positives, and quarantines are 213. And that truly only titrates up from 48 to 65 within a month's period, and only less than 100 that went up in quarantines. In those two, that same block of time, we evidently went up in positives, and quarantines on August the 30th was 1,079. Is that accurate?
That would be correct.
Just if you remember, the summer, we had a surge coming out of July and August back into the school year. So that's correct, the 269, 296 positives, so.
So we didn't have a break in school from October, the, let's say it, that ended on October the 18th to October the 25th. So those numbers actually went down, and they've only went up, I mean, literally, that number has not went up that much, if we're just looking at just numbers, just period numbers. So that has really not went up, but yet now we're getting ready to go into a two-week break where school wasn't even in, and the numbers are even worse.
Right, so October to, October 18th through the 25th, what I think you're seeing is a residual holdover of your required masking from the week of October 18th.
So what about...
So 57 went to 48 in terms of numbers of positives.
Okay, Erin, so what about November 22nd? I mean, my phone's blowing up with questions from people going, why do those numbers look so different when it's mask optional versus mask mandate? October 18th, we mask mandate, it's 57. November the 22nd, optional mask, been in there for over a month, and it's 65. I mean, that's...
Well, I mean... I just saw low transmission in the whole county around that. We just don't have very much infecting out there.
Right, exactly.
That's actually one of the reasons why I'm so concerned about staying mask optional, because it's one thing when you've only got 400 or 500 cases in your whole county in a week, because that's very, that's not as much active virus circulating to infect folks. When you've got 3,000 active cases in one week, you now have so much more ability for contact to happen. When you put the masks on, you stop. It's not a close contact, because they had a mask on. Take masks off, and now you're putting, there's that much exposure for people to run into the virus, so to speak.
So you're saying if we pull your slides, that same period of time, there'll be less people that were... Okay, all right, I get that.
Yeah, right. There's just less...
So we're missing slide information when we're trying to make sense out of this, and that's, well, we do want to change some of the metrics, because it really is hard, you know, to look at one slide and go, well, this, you know, shows us less. Your slide on that shows more, you know, it's kind of hard to balance that, you know, going from slide to slide.
And I think that's why we talk about the importance of looking at trends, and not necessarily one point in time, because it is just that, a point in time. But if you can look at your trends, you can note if you're going up or you're going down. So it's clear here, you know, your number of quarantines when you went mask optional went up. You went from 213 up to 732.
I want to be clear too on this. You know, our snapshot is the district, your snapshot is the entire county. I mean, you're looking at a bigger picture than we are. We're not trying to mislead anybody by any means, I don't want to confuse anybody. These are accurate numbers of the buildings, and yours is going to be obviously a larger big, so your trend is going to be, again, accurate, but it's going to show the entire county.
And I think what y'all are looking at is what's happening in the whole county, and what this is focusing on is what's happening in just our schools. Am I looking at this correctly? And what we need to look at is the whole county, not just focusing on this. And I can see where our viewing audience may get confused and say, aha, look here, we are, it looks like it's a lot closer than what it maybe really possibly could be. And I think we need to look at the whole picture instead of just focusing, you know, one little area. Am I correct on this, or am I looking at it differently?
And, you know, the school is simply, you know, it is...
Bonnie, do you mind to come to them? I hate, they won't be able to hear me good.
The school is part of the community, so, and if you look at the trend over the past 20 months, when county cases went up, school cases go up. And right now, with 3,000 cases in one week, it becomes very difficult to tease things apart and try to say, well, this is what's happening in county versus this is what's happening in schools. The 3,000 cases means we've got widespread transmission, and we have to do everything we can to protect one another.
Again, if you look at our metric, we do use the county data for that as well. We just showed this evening, the 3,000 cases, and we use the county positivity rate as well. So we're trying to give you a big, broad picture, both snapshot of what's going on in the school, and then some information from the Health Alliance. It's why our partnership has been so crucial, is we meet with them on a weekly basis, getting that information back and forth.
And, you know, just on behalf of the board, we really do appreciate your being here. You know, you are the experts. You know, this is what you do. I think some of the questions that we really have to give answers to, you know, because we have to answer to parents and to teachers, that's our job. You know, we're in the education business, you're in the community health business. We can't protect the whole community, you know, because we only have those kids from a snapshot of seven to fourish during the daytime. They're doing whatever prior to that, on the weekends, you know, there's not a mask mandate anywhere else. You know, we can't control that, so, you know, the idea of them coming in and being here for that short amount of time, and then still having those huge gaps of holes of lunchtimes and recess, and knowing they're coming in from other places, you know, that they, we have no control, we don't know what has been going on, we don't know, you know, what they're doing. That's what our challenge is. You know, we can mask them, but when we get into the whole, it's lunch, it's recess exposures, which is exactly what happened when we got that report. It was the timeframes that we couldn't control that. You know, that's our dilemma. If we could do it the whole entire time, you know, that would make much more sense, but we can't.
I agree, and none of us can solve this problem on our own, but if we're all working together, we can do a much better job.
Okay.
I'm just going to challenge us for one minute.
Sure.
Again, we would love to have a mask required policy in place through the end of January. Do I think you're going to go there? Probably not. So I would ask, can we get two weeks so that things settle down, so that we get testing supplies back in place? And we can see these numbers, we can get the task force back together to recalibrate your metrics so that you can make decisions. So if you can't go to the whole month, you know, can you dip a pinky toe in, not a whole foot in, for two weeks through the three-day Martin Luther King Weekend? It's another consideration.
Hey, Erin, okay, and when do you think, as far as the testing kit shortage, how long?
I hope they're sitting on our loading dock right now.
Okay, I knew you said something earlier, but I couldn't remember.
Yeah, our test-to-stay kits came this morning, so we're hoping, you know, the additional kits arrive. So we've done what we can do, and we even reached out, like I said earlier, to other vendors to see if we could borrow some of theirs, but everybody's in the same.
So question about that, why, do you know why that kit was changed? Why it's a different kit, and there's an issue with that?
Well, are you talking about the ABC, the test-to-stay kit? I think it was because they saw, foresaw the challenges with the Abbott by next now, so they changed to the Quidel, I think is how you pronounce it, is my assumption.
And what was the challenge? Because I don't think anyone really knew.
Just testing surge around, you know, the globe. So everybody's wanting these rapids, these, you know, Abbott's are stocked in most places where you can go and buy them, so they're trying to put them there, they're trying to put them at physician offices, pharmacies, so it's just general supply demand.
Got it.
Can I just make a statement? Erin, I apologize that you have to beg us to follow your recommendations. I think you guys have given us a recommendation. You are our health experts and who we should be listening to when we're trying to make decisions. So I appreciate your recommendation, and I think that we should follow that. I'm sorry you have to beg us.
Well, I don't think they're begging us, but we just all have to feel very comfortable where we're at, so. Dr. Laura, I have a quick question for you, because I had a question from a, you know, and Ms. Sandage, with all due respect, you're getting lots of questions, so we are too, and I have to field those just as much. This may be my personal opinion or not, but this is questions I'm getting as well. So I'm going to make sure that people that are asking me to ask y'all here, it's our time to ask the questions.
I just wanted to apologize for you having to beg us, because I feel like that's what you're doing. Thanks for your recommendation.
So I was asked about the antibodies. Are they taken consideration now regarding people that have antibodies? How is that being handled? We, I think we touched on it a little bit a time prior, but you weren't here, but now that you're a direct patient care, how are antibodies being, if a patient has known...
You mean monoclonal antibodies that they give to treat COVID?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So initially, people were getting the monoclonal antibodies, and they were good for the Delta variant, and they were actually very useful and helpful, but there's a shortage of antibodies now. And then they weren't working as well with the current variant. So right now, there's a very limited supply, and they're getting some back, but we're not able to give as much as we were in the past, so.
Okay, twofold, I really meant, are being people tested for antibodies.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the monoclonal antibodies.
No, that's okay. No, it's the...
So if you want to be, if you want to be tested for antibodies, people, a lot of people go and request it from their physician. You can be tested to see if you've had COVID in the past, so yes, they will test you for antibodies if you request that. But that's what I was saying before, and what Bonnie was saying is that, the overwhelming evidence says if you've been vaccinated and had COVID, that's kind of your best bet. So, but people who've been vaccinated seem to fare better than people with natural immunity. And again, that's because you get the antigenic drift, you get the change in the parts of the virus that you form immunity to. So you can be antibody tested to find out if you have antibodies, but they're not, that's not changing how, that's not going into the algorithms as far as like, have you been vaccinated or not?
Okay, that's the actual answer I think they were looking for.
Yes, no, it's not going into this, oh, you've had it, so you're being, they're not doing that yet, saying that's okay.
Okay. Thank you for being here. We know that you probably feel like you've been drilled, and I get that. You know, we have people telling us, you know, why aren't you lis, it's not that we're not listening, we just need to make sure that all the questions are answered. There's a lot of people, you know, people are on two different sides of this. No matter which way you are, no matter how much you'd like it, dislike it, we represent the community. You know, left side, right side, positive side, negative side, that's what we're here to do. That's our job to do that, whether, you know, people like it or not. So that's why you're here, and we appreciate you being here.
Oh, 100%, I understand, I appreciate, I appreciate the opportunity. I 100% understand. I just, if you'll, if you'll put yourself, like, I try to put myself in other people's shoes, I know these kids need to be in school. At first, I was like, so everybody stay home. And then Chip Buckle from Kannapolis was like, these kids need to come to school, they need love, because a lot of them don't get love at home, there's increased abuse at home, they're not getting fed. And he opened my eyes to that, and I appreciate that. And I do know that we need to get these kids to school and keep them in school. I think the masks are the best chance to keep people as safe as we can, to keep the teachers and everybody else and the staff here, and I know there's different opinions about that. And you talked about how we're doing a terrible job protecting the kids from fear and everything else, but honestly, the worst thing that's happened, I think, is just like the politicalization of the whole thing, you know? I mean, I know that's, you know, and there's two sides, and I appreciate that, I understand that. But also, I want you to understand that I walk through ICUs every day and see people intubated, and it's just, it just breaks your heart. So that's where we're, I'm coming from the hot seat.
And we get that, we know that you're on the front line, and we do, you know, we truly do. We don't like it to appear political, no matter how we ask these questions, or what we do, they're labeled political, and we really are not. It's questions that we need to get answers for a lot of people that we represent, you know.
I totally understand. My grandmother's on the school board in Burke County, so I understand.
You know exactly then.
I do.
You get to ask the hot questions whether you want to or not. Thank you, ladies, for being here tonight, we appreciate it. All right, good night. Yes, absolutely.
Dr. Coyle, Dr. Pons, Ms. Schuh, Ms. Alexander, again, thank you. I just want to reiterate our appreciation for your attendance here tonight and helping us sort through a lot of the questions that were asked. So I do thank you, and I appreciate your presence this evening.
I would like to ask to have an amendment to our agenda to put a vote for, possibly a vote on the agenda for masks.
So I have an amendment to the agenda to add a vote regarding the mask mandate. Is there a second?
A second. I do have a question, though, or clarification. We have six board members here tonight, so if it's a three-three vote, what happens at that point?
We have to get past just amending the agenda first, so that goes on the floor first.
Okay, so can we clarify that when that gets completed? Thanks.
Yes, so I have a motion to amend the agenda as stated. I have a second by Ms. Sandage. All those in favor to amend the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
So now I would like a raise of the hands, please. Okay, so I have three, so this is going to wind up having some issues if we get into... Yeah, all those in favor of holding until the next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I know, right? Mr. White?
On a tie vote, the motion fails.
Fails, that's what I thought, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
And it doesn't mean it can't be brought up. I mean, if it changes or something like that, it has to be a majority.
And it's already on the agenda for next Monday night even, as well.
Correct.
Okay, right, perfect.
And can I ask another question too? I mean, obviously, by next week, we're going to have much more updated information based on, you know, the numbers that we're looking at right now are a lot of the numbers through the holiday season. And so it's not a very good indicator for what's actually happening within the school system as far as transmission goes. Is that not correct?
Did we actually identify with the amendment passed?
Hold on, let me hold the line, so everyone can just make a comment as we go down. So Ms. Sandage, you started first, go ahead.
I said, do we actually identify if the request to amend the agenda went through? I know we had three yays. Did we have two, three noes? I know we had three yays. Did we have two, three noes? What did we have?
You, Ms. Adcock, and Ms. Carpenter voted in favor. Mr. Fur, myself, and Ms. Blackwell voted against.
Thank you.
Okay, and that motion fails. So now, Mr. Fur, I'll, you, your next comments were, please.
I think what we saw last year was when we first came back to school, the numbers were up because of the holidays, and then they went down pretty quick. But I do understand that this, this variant may be different, it may be more contagious, so we'll be, I'm curious to see how it plays out.
Ms. Blackwell, did you finish your comment?
I'm done, yeah, thanks.
Ms. Carpenter?
I, I just want to say I respect all of y'all, but I'm very disappointed. Now, you're, you're gambling with the safety of our staff, our children, and this community. And again, I respect every one of you, and I'm not, you know, throwing, but I'm just very disappointed. Now, you heard what our professionals told us, and they said that a week could make a very big difference. And I'm just very, very disappointed that you would do that. Now, again, I'm, I'm, don't take, but, but I am very disappointed.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Ms. Adcock?
Um, not really any comments, just, we will vote next week, is that right?
Okay, thank you. It was already on the agenda for the vote.
I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, this may be for our lawyers. I was at the, good gracious, I'm drawing a blank here, law conference a few weeks ago, and there was a discussion about the liability of the board, and when they don't take the recommendations that are being presented to us. Can you just kind of walk us through that a little bit, because I want to make sure that as a board, when we don't listen to our local health department, that we are okay?
If you're asking for our legal opinion, which I know you are, then I would suggest that we have a closed session agenda to talk about the legal aspect of it.
Okay, and we don't have that today, correct?
So we actually can add, now, that's what y'all would like to do, is to, because we have not discussed this. And board members, it would be really good if you would prepare us for this type of scenario, and not, in the, the requests that needs to come are special called meetings, and we've had this discussion, or if you would like to add a closed session so that we can have attorney privileged discussions and then make decisions. That makes our discussions go a lot smoother and a whole lot easier. So if someone would like to put a motion on the floor to add a closed session for tonight, that is now available.
I'd like to put a motion on the floor to add a closed session.
Have a motion on the floor by Ms. Sandage?
You're moving to amend the agenda as, or previously adopted, to add a session, a closed session to seek attorney-client information or?
What you just said.
I think we all got where she was going.
I'm tired.
I know, I just want to make certain.
We need to address this.
So I'm going to restate it, that Ms. Sandage has put a motion on the floor to amend the agenda to add a closed session. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Carpenter. All those in favor, say aye, and I want you to raise your hand, okay? Mr. Fur, I can't see you.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, okay, all right, so that motion passes with Ms. Sandage, myself, Ms. Blackwell, and Ms. Carpenter, and Ms. Adcock agreeing to go into closed session once we adjourn. Okay, and Mr. Fur?
What?
Deferring, okay, that's fine. He did vote no, he sure did. Okay, so with that, we will add that as item number 7.01, and we will move adjournment, adjournment down to eight, okay? All right, thank you. So now we will move to items under 6.01, which are the policies for approval on first read. We will have Ms. Burns to the podium. And Ms. Burns, if you're okay, I'm going to do what I normally do. We're going to read the policies, the policy title, and ask for any comments or questions. And this is where we will ask to move the items either into the consent agenda or action. Policy 21257315, confidential information. Policy 3100, curriculum and development, 4050, children of military families, 5022, registered sex offenders, 6320, use of student transportation services, 6340, transportation service vehicle contracts, 9,000, planning to address facility needs. Ms. Burns, did you get any comments or questions from any board members?
No, I had no comments or questions.
Okay, knowing that we have had none, do I hear any tonight, any comments or questions? Hearing none, may I move this to consent agenda for next week?
Yes, ma'am.
Good, okay. We will keep you for 6.02, policies on approval for second read, and that only being the 4150, student assignment, transfer, and program choice enrollment. Any comments or questions?
No, no comments or questions.
Okay, and are there any comments or questions tonight, board members? Okay, may I move that to the consent agenda for the business meeting? All good, okay. We will move now to 6.03, which is the 2021-2022 academic calendar revision, and we will have Dr. Kelly Withers to the podium. Thank you for joining us for your first time tonight.
Good evening, board. I'm here tonight to present the revision to the 2021-2022 academic calendar. As you know, on December the 8th, the North Carolina Supreme Court ordered that May 17th become the new primary date, and many of our schools are used as polling sites. So we are bringing a revision to two of our calendars tonight, the traditional calendar and the Wolfmeadow calendar. And so I'm going to go over the actual recommendations for revision, and then give a little bit of context about what the calendar is for understanding, and of course, take any questions that you might have. So the first change is that we are on the traditional calendar here, looking at changing May 17th to a capped teacher workday. Again, it was a regular student day, and we're asking to change that due to the primary date and the polling site. May 10th was the previous primary date, and it would remain that capped workday. We do have letters training that you've previously probably heard about. The state mandated letters training is on May the 10th, so that would remain. In addition, we're asking to change March 8th and March 28th to, from optional days to capped days, so that we can use those days for professional development with all of our staff, in addition to the staff that's doing the letters training. A few other points of clarification around this calendar, just so you understand, I'm sure you've heard before that we operate based on hours, and so we have, the state mandates 1,025 hours. This calendar currently is about 1,070 hours. That's 176 instructional days that students would be present. In addition, within this entire calendar, there are 10 annual leave days, which means that our 10-month staff and our students would not be present. Our 12-month staff has the opportunity to take those days off as they choose. We have 11 holidays that are mandated at the state level, and then 12, oh, sorry, 18 workdays total. Nine of them are capped, and nine of them are optional days. So that totals out for our 10-month employees at 215 days, and then our 12-month employees have an additional 44 workdays during the summer, plus one holiday, July 4th obviously falls during the summer. So that's 45 additional days for 260 workdays for our 12-month employees. And that is within this current revised calendar, the way that it works out as well. And then the Wolfmeadow calendar, we'll switch to that one. The Wolfmeadow calendar that we're taking a look at here, again, we are recommending to change that May 17th to a capped day, again, based on the primary day. But we are also asking the May, the March 8th day for Wolfmeadow would become a capped day as well. March 28th is not in play for the Wolfmeadow calendar, because they are currently in school based upon their alternate calendar. So again, to recap the revision for us, we are asking May 17th to become a capped teacher workday due to the change in the primary date, and then a change of March 8th and March 28th to capped as well, so we can maximize our time with our staff for professional development.
Okay, board members, comments or questions, and I'll begin with Ms. Adcock.
I don't have any comments, thank you.
Ms. Carpenter?
Now, the letters, that's just for the elementary, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, what, and, and they're capped, and when you say capped, that means the teachers have to do it, right?
Yes, ma'am, we will be offering professional development for all teachers.
For all teachers, so y'all plan something for them. Is that what you're telling me then?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay, so, but it is only for the, so the middle and high, they don't have to do the letters?
They do not have to do the letters training, that is correct. It's K5, but we will have training for all of our teachers, even those that are not in the letters training.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Fur?
I got one. Are we going to get nasty emails from teachers?
I don't think I can speak on behalf of the teachers, but I hope that our professional development is wonderful enough that they will value the time that we are working with them.
Okay.
Ms. Sandage?
No questions, thanks for your presentation.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, are all good for this to be placed on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
You had, Madam Chairman, you had asked, and I didn't know, about them to explain all the little circles and the little diamonds?
Actually, she just did, but she probably didn't equate it to that symbol, but just the days. But if you, Kelly, could you do that?
Absolutely, I'll be glad to do that. So if you're looking at the calendar, we'll operate off the traditional calendar, because they use the same symbols on each one of those. The dark green circles are capped, meaning that those are protected days staff would have to work. The light green circles are your optional teacher workdays, so there are nine of each of those, nine that are capped and nine that are optional. The, if you go to September, for example, the red triangle is a holiday. And those holidays, there are 11 of those, and again, we use the State Personnel Commission to tell us the holidays that are there, and you'll see them throughout. In addition, if you see the just slash marks, those, those are regular student days, but they denote that it's the end of a quarter, the end of the nine weeks. And then, when you see the red squares, those are annual leave days. So on an annual leave day, our students are not in school, our 10-month employees are not working, and our 12-month employees choose whether they work or not. They would have to take leave if they do not work. And I believe, let's see, if you go, there's a new symbol that you have in December, when you made them remote days, you added a different symbol there when you allowed the staff to be able to work remotely. And if you go to January, there are blue diamonds, as well as in June, and those denote, that those are early dismissal days for the high schools, that's exam week for our high schools. And then if you go to, there's also a yellow diamond, and that is an early dismissal day, that's the last day of school. Last day students are present.
So you just said the magic word, which will pin ears back, and that's remote. So when teachers are working remote, they're going to question why kids, why we can't work remote now. That House Bill 654 prevents us from allowing remote, and I'm not sure we've even covered that tonight, but that's very important, because you've actually said that word. I want to make sure it's explained.
Sure, so the first piece of that, on the calendar, the remote days that are denoted were the workdays that you changed in December, which is different than the question that you're asking. So Dr. Kupicki, did you want to say?
Yeah, so Dr. Weathers, what I would ask is, I believe that you're referring to Senate Bill 654, and the 30 hours that we're allowed to use for five, up to five days, or equivalent to 30 hours. If you could speak to that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. So in the House bill, there is 30 hours that are used for remote working in an inclement weather situation. So you can call that as remote, that would be something we would decide, obviously, in the event of inclement weather or an emergency.
But I want people to understand that, that House Bill 654 presents us, prevents us from placing us back in a remote learning environment for kids.
Sure. So again, that, they only allow the 30 hours, and only for inclement weather purposes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure.
Appreciate that. Absolutely.
Yeah, since we had Ms. Weathers up here, I'd just like to, to thank her. She attended, we had a basketball tournament at Mount Pleasant for area schools, and she was in attendance, and it was nice to see her. So now I challenge the rest of you people in this building to get out and, and see your, your kids play sports. Thank you. Thanks for showing up.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, and welcome aboard.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening. Okay, next, board members, we will move to 6.04, the precast bathroom structure for West Cabarrus High School auxiliary fields, and we will have Mr. Tim Louder and Brian Cohn to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. I think we're here to give you something a little more simple tonight. We just want to build a bathroom at West Cabarrus High School. It is a precast unit. It'll come in two pieces, and try to set on site, and it'll be a turnkey project. The funniest for this project is, within Cabarrus County's budget for the athletic fields that they did for us at the, at New High School, and also at Robinson, and Cox Mill. And so therefore, we're just asking that y'all approve, because it's $230,000, so it's larger than our, we have the authority to sign, so we're asking you to do that, and the county reimburs us once it's delivered.
And if you've ever been out there for any type of event, you know how important this really is, you wouldn't even question it.
Vitality, board, yes.
Absolutely. Mr. Fur?
To make sure utilities are there, ready for it when it comes in, so that's really the main thing.
Okay, board members. So with that being said, any comments or questions? It's nice to get to lighten that up just a little bit. Anything at all? May I place this on the consent agenda for the business meeting? Okay, consent agenda.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, and next we will have 6.05, and that is the naming of the new early college, and we will have Mr. Ben Allred to the podium. Good evening.
I don't know if I'll be as simple as Tim was. Last month, Dr. Kupicki was able to report that we got official approval to move forward with our early college opening in 2223, which means that we put some official things in motion. First thing I think I wanted to say is, this is a partnership between Atrium Health, the Cabarrus College of Health Sciences, and Cabarrus County Schools. It's a special school in the sense that there's lots of early colleges, or what's called cooperative innovative high schools in North Carolina. There's 133 of them, but only five of those are partnered with a private college. So we'll be one of six partnered with a private college in North Carolina, and very proud of that. This school is going to prepare kids to come out and work in healthcare, hopefully right here in Atrium Health Cabarrus, but in the healthcare field all over this state and this country. Just as a reminder, early colleges partner with Institute of Higher Education, in this case, the Cabarrus College of Health Sciences. Students graduate high school in four or five years with a high school diploma, an associate's degree, and other certifications or progress towards a four-year degree. And one of the proudest things I have about early colleges is they break generational cycles. And the way they do that is we target first-generation college students, students at risk of dropping out of high school, and those students that can benefit, benefit from accelerated learning opportunities. You know that we have two fantastic early colleges in this district that graduate kids from an honors program with associate's degrees every year. We have almost 100% graduation rates at both of those schools. Just quick facts, we had 108 applicants, we'll take 60 students. We begin interviewing those students Thursday evening for the inaugural class. That's a very exciting moment to be able to choose 60 students, and then, of course, choose the school to become the class of, I think it's 2026, so those young students will become that first graduating class. And then we begin to interview a principal in January for, starting in March, so he or she can begin doing all the work that many people behind the scenes are doing to get that school up and running. And one of the things that we have to do in order to get a school up and running is to name the school. So in working with the college and Atrium Health, staff here in Cabarrus County Schools, the name that we'd like to recommend for your consideration is the Cabarrus Health Sciences Institute. And with that, I'll take any questions you have.
Board members, comments or questions? I'll begin with Ms. Sandage.
So can you just break down the process, the interview process for us, like, what types of staff are in there?
Sure.
And what are the students submitting, and how that, like, what that looks like?
Sure, so we will have, we don't have a staff for the school yet, so we'll have CNI staff, Ms. Simansky, for example, in program choice helps, other staff in our department will assist, staff from the college, Dr. Meg Padgett, the provost, Michelle Gay, who's one of the professors there, Chris Porcella, who's works in admissions, so college staff will be helping us with that. We have 30-minute interviews, parents and guardians come in with their students. We have about five to 10 minutes with the parents and their students, and then we dismiss the parent. We have about a 15 or 20-minute interview with the student. The only thing we ask them to do is just be yourself. We're looking for students who are interested in being in a school like this on their own, looking for maturity, motivation, interested in health sciences, in a rigorous program that accelerates them to a fantastic future.
I love the excitement that I see from you. It's making me excited to.
Project, we've put years of work into it, so exciting to see it come to fruition.
Thanks for your work on this and the presentation, I appreciate it.
Mr. Fur?
Just thanks for another opportunity for our kids. We certainly appreciate it.
Ms. Blackwell?
The name is good.
The name is good, I like it. Certainly fits what we're, what we're trying to put out there, and again, Ben, thank you for all of your hard work, you always do such a great job, and I'm certainly looking forward to getting some more of these healthcare professionals out into our hospitals and medical institutions, so thank you.
Ms. Carpenter?
Well, I'm excited, too, I remember when this was first talked about, so I'm just glad we can get it off the ground, so I'm with you, I've got a big smile under here. So, yes, and I like the name also, and I know it's areas, I know when the first, when I first heard about it, when we first talked about it, we talked about it was areas that there were need for, and so I'm real excited about it, and I like the name, too. When you ran the name, was this run by all three, three org, you know, people that were involved?
Yeah, you can imagine, there was a robust discussion about the naming of the school, especially with three institutions, and I think we landed on a good name that we all agree on, so as long as you all agree as well.
Well, that sounds good, thank you.
Ms. Adcock?
I just did what everybody else said, really excited to see this come off the ground, and I know students will be really excited and encouraged by it, so thank you so much for your work on this.
Okay, so, that's fine, or I can change the motion, so that's fine, either way. Would you like to address this?
Yeah.
So I, I don't want, I hate to put you on the spot, Ben, but the agreed term was Cabarrus Health Science Institute, I think that's just a typo on your, on the, on the screen that we put on there.
I will check that, I had it as sciences, but I'll check to make sure.
So when I met with Dr. Kropchak, it was Cabarrus Health Science Institute, and I know he went, I know you've done a fantastic job on this, this is not a critique on you, and I know that it's been the last hour of kind of getting this up to date. So the actual name is Cabarrus Health Science Institute, and the reason why that, in our partnership with the College of, the Cabarrus College Health Sciences is, we wanted to, Dr. Kropchak, his, he wants to separate, it's a partnership with the college because he wants to separate the name from the college so there's no confusion, as he's out recruiting kids to go to school, which he's trying to do in his vision, and we're trying to recruit kids to go into the program, our vision, that they don't, that the branding of the college and the county, Cabarrus County Schools doesn't get mixed up. So the actual name that he wants to, the actual name that he recommended, and it's Ben's leadership that has done a fantastic job in getting this up and running, so he gives you, he gives you the report of the kids and the applications, just really tribute to Ben and his leadership. But the actual name, and this is not, this has gone round and round and round, is what I'm trying to say, the actual name is Cabarrus Health Science Institute, Sciences Institute. And that gives us, that gives us a clear path to what we're trying to do, it also gives a clear path to what the college is trying to do, and it continues to work the partnership with Dr. Kropchak and his vision as well.
Okay, so, number one, do I have an okay by all to put this on the consent agenda, or does this need to be an action item? Consent? I'll just ask that y'all make the correction?
Yep.
That it's noted?
Of course.
That it needs to be made tonight?
Again, that is, that is not, that responsibility falls to me, because I'm the one that had the last, most recent meeting with Dr. Kropchak, and through all the ins and outs, I didn't get a chance to talk to Ben about that, so this is the name that we agreed at the time before that, so the update is on me. So thank you, Ben, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Okay, with that, we will move to 6.06, approval of the furniture order for the Roberta Road Middle School. We'll have Mr. Tim Lauder, well, Mr. Brian Cone.
Just me tonight.
Just you, okay.
Good evening again. So over the last six months, Cabarrus County School staff and new idea have worked to complete the furniture selection for, that will outfit the new Roberta Road Middle School. The total purchase price for this package comes in at $1,314,000, 100, I'm sorry, $1,314,139.26, which is well within our budgeted funds. Tonight, we're just asking for the approval of this agreement so that we may issue the purchase order, and they can order the furniture due to the delays that we are seeing with delivery of material and product. Having questions?
Any questions? I'll begin with Ms. Adcock.
No questions.
Ms. Carpenter?
No, no questions.
Ms. Blackwell?
No questions.
Mr. Fur?
No.
Ms. Sandage? Okay, may I have, all the, is that consent? Consent? Okay. Consent it is.
Thank you.
And then we will move to 6.07, the Roberta Middle School switches. We'll have Mr. Dane Hughes to the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening, board members. Late last year, we did a bid for sealed switch bid, sealed bid for our switches for the new Roberta Road Middle School. We followed all the finance bid protocols, we received nine bids, and Carolina Advanced Digital was the lowest at $276,388.2. We request your approval to place this order.
Okay, with that, may I have any comments or questions? I'll begin with Ms. Sandage. Nothing? Mr. Fur? Ms. Blackwell? Ms. Carpenter?
No.
Ms. Adcock? Okay, and I'm assuming consent?
Yes.
By all, consent it is.
Thank you so much.
All right. And with that, we are going to move to our 7.01, and that is going to be the amendment to the agenda, and I would just ask that we have a motion for the board to convene in closed session to consult with our attorneys and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-31811A3. So moved. I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell.
I'll second it.
A second by Ms. Carpenter.